The City of Dunellen City Council Workshop, June 8th, 2022. 5:35. Would you please rise for the virtual? Would you all remain standing? Is there anyone in the audience that would like to say some words of prayer? Yes. Hey Reverend. Reverend? Amen.
Let's pray together. Father, we're so grateful to be able to have the opportunity to come this evening and, Father, together to do the business, Lord, of this city. And I pray for our mayor, I pray for our council, Lord, and I pray that you would give them tremendous wisdom and discernment. Father, as we walk through this world, may we do so in a way, Lord, it certainly brings you honor and glory. Tonight, we celebrate your son, Jesus Christ, Father, who made the ultimate sacrifice on the cross that we might be able to have the forgiveness of sin. Thank you for the way that you've demonstrated your love to us, Father, in that we might be able to have that penalty removed from us, have righteousness applied to our lives, and, Father, live with you forever. Father, I pray that we'll be reminded constantly of the way that you love us. Find us faithful, Lord, as we serve you. We pray all this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you very much. Everyone, please be seated. Ms. Odom, can we have roll call? Everyone, we have a pretty full house for this workshop tonight. We have a lot of good things to talk about. If you need to speak, you have to take it outside because the acoustics in here are very good. We can hear what you say. So. Roll call.
Mayor White?
Present.
I'm here.
You're?
Councilwoman Page. Here. For the record, Councilwoman Tevith's accent tonight. And Mayor, if you, when we go to council comments on you, I have something Councilwoman Tevith would like for me to read into the record, okay?
Okay.
Michelle Leonard, District Court.
Yeah.
Jan Smith, Finance Officer.
Here.
Troy Snyder, Public Works.
Here.
Georgina Seid, Community Development.
Here.
Julie Donowski, Records Club, is attending via Zoom. Chief McQuaid.
Hello.
Lieutenant Yawkes.
Here.
City Attorney Andrew Hannon.
I'm here.
Agenda for this meeting was posted on the city's website, City Hall Volton Board, on Wednesday, June 1st, 2022, and amended on June 2nd to add backup to item number 14.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Odom. A couple items for some housekeeping. This is a good time right now to turn any beeping or device phones, whatever, turn it off right now. If you want to speak, if you're just signed up, we'll get an opportunity to speak first. If you have not signed up, once those that have signed up, you will get your opportunity to speak. Please be aware that these meetings are recorded and they are transcribed. They are also on Zoom, so people are listening. So everything that is said, everything that is discussed goes into public record. It will be a permanent, permanently be on for everybody to review, look at, download, and watch. If you decide you would like to speak, please, when you come to the podium, give us your name and address. You will be given three minutes to speak. At a workshop, at the beginning of the meeting, you can speak about any topic you would like to talk about. It can be something that's on the agenda, or it can be something new, different, just comments in general. After you, we go through this workshop, and you can see this workshop tonight has a lot of good items on it. You can hang in there with us for the three hours it will probably take. You will be given another opportunity to speak at the end. And believe it or not, we do have people that do sit here for three hours if they want to speak at the end. So with that said, it is 6:00. It's 5:40, and Ms. Odom will start off without anyone who has signed up.
Wendy Samms.
Ms. Samms, you're first. Name and address.
Hi, my name is Wendy Samms, and I live on 11580 Camp Drive in Blue Cove. And what I would like to discuss a little bit this evening is the concern that I have on the short-term rentals that we're starting to see in Blue Cove. On the street that I live on, there are currently three VRBOs or Airbnbs with a fourth that's making, that a fourth home that they're making an offer on. That's on one street in our neighborhood. When you buy in a residential neighborhood, you have a reasonable expectation, and reasonable is what I want to look at here, that your neighbors are your neighbors, love them or hate them. Usually, when you look at the house, you also look at your neighbors. You want to say, do I, you know, sort of want to live next to them? Well, the situation that we're starting to face is that I have different neighbors every weekend. It changes the client, it changes the atmosphere and the climate of your neighborhood. I have some examples that we've had in our neighborhood. One of them, one of the homes has big neon lights in the windows, a big heart and a big flamingo, so that people that are going to be renting the house know which house it is. Well, if you look at all the other houses in our neighborhood, nobody else has gigantic neon lights in their windows and, you know, stuff that no one else in the neighborhood is doing. The second one is loud music, loud voices, large number of cars till past midnight. When the neighbors on both sides of this home are in their 70s, the neighbors across the street are in their 70s. Some of them didn't move in but about three years ago. Do you think they signed up to have non-stop parties for someone's 18th and 21st birthday? I don't think they did. Recording in progress. So one of the things that I'd like to bring forth is you maybe suggest a four-day minimum stay be put in place and a free card maximum. I know a lot of people that buy these houses, they're charging between $300 and $590. Good for them. But I'm not buying a commercial district. I bought in a residential. And what I bought into was a community, not a group of ever-changing cars and parties and people that care nothing for the neighborhood. So if we want to attract people to Dunellen, I understand it, but we want to attract families, we want to attract seasonal people, we want to attract people that might come back and call Dunellen a home. You're not going to have 18 and 20 windrows having their big party, want to call Dunellen a home. So I think we need to have some discussions on that. I know that we can't quite tell people what to do, but I think people are buying homes not to live in. I think they're doing it to make money. You know, if they want to go into the hotel industry, they should do that, not in our residential communities. So again, I'm not against necessarily the VRBOs. I'm against weekend rentals. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Ms. Odom?
Barbara Ocasio. That would be beautiful.
My name is Barbara Ocasio. This is my partner in crime, my beautiful daughter, Mariana Ocasio. And we live at 10258, no, I'm not, yes, 58, North Garderby, Central Springs. We're very close neighbors, and I want to thank you, first of all, for signing that, it's not a bill, but signing that you are with the people, your citizens, about the no build, not building any more highways and byways. Thank you, guys. And I want to thank the mayor straight out. When we invited you for our meeting last two weeks ago, I never expected to see you there, let alone to speak. Thank you on behalf of citizens. Amen.
I'm not supposed to allow you to clap.
But we didn't hear nothing.
I do have a couple questions. I've heard Mr. Mizzulo is going to be here. He is my local representative. And it took me four emails to his wonderful receptionist before I finally got an answer to four simple questions regarding no build. I do know he likes the bill, and I do know he likes the big grown, big business, everything. That is not good for the people. He's not listening to the people. So one of my questions I asked him, finally got an answer, was, I did get a nod the first meeting when I went about who is, who they're going to listen to. Who is the one that is going to say yes or no to this? They nodded yes, you, the people. Suncoast had, did a poll, they said 67% of the people said no. They went ahead and built anyway. You saw, you were there, 100% of the people, and it was a room full, said no. So, Mr. Mizzulo, if you're here, please listen. No bill. We also have three people allied, four people that signed a no-build pledge. Are you willing to sign it as well? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Odom?
I don't have anyone else signed up, and I don't have any hands raised until.
Okay, so randomly, I'll pick up, I'll start in the front, Julia. That's a little high for you. Maybe you can kind of pull it down a little bit. Troy, if they need a hand. Okay, there you go.
All right, Julianne Mendonza, 1189, or East Blue Cove Drive. I also want to talk about the short-term rental. We know that Florida attracts more short-term renters than any other state. And currently, the lack of regulation around this growing number of rentals is changing, much as Wendy said, the character of our community, and it's transforming the quality of life for those of upper homeowners. In Blue Cove, we have at least eight short-term rentals. Some have been purchased by investors. Some of them purchase site-unsated, be used exclusively for short-term rentals. These single-family homes are packed vacationers, sharing the costs to avoid the taxes associated with hotel stays. It's unsettling to have new neighbors every, they're careless with their trash, they're noisy at all hours. I guess I should say many are. You could argue that there's some nice ones scattered in. Careless with their trash and their noise, parking excessive number of vehicles on the streets and easements, and allowing their dogs to be unleashed. My neighbor recently told me a story about being bitten by a dog in the short-term rental near her house. So I want to ask that the city works toward effective and enforceable regulations to protect our neighborhood's characters and the taxpayers' quality of life. I'm happy to see number six on the agenda to put some parameters around short-term rentals. We know that we can't stop them, but let's just maybe hold them accountable to doing it right. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Who else?
The lady in the back.
Lady in the back.
Again, lady in the back. Actually, we tend to manhandle this.
Good evening. My name is Khalila Windler, and this is my partner in crime, Christopher. I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'd like to voice my opinion.
We need your address.
A name and address, please.
Khalila Windler, 20008 East Pennsylvania Ave., and I also own the home next door at 20030 East Pennsylvania Ave. I would like to voice my opinion in favor of the city regulating vacation rentals in town. Vacation rentals across the world provide a wonderful experience for people to see the world while sleeping in accommodations that are more enjoyable than sterile hotel rooms. No offense to anyone who prefers that method of watching. Our small town, as we all know, offers a hidden gem that's becoming more known and enjoyed by many. Our town, as we all know, is also in debt. It would be responsible for us to consider this lucrative means of providing additional income ways that don't impact citizens' taxes. The economic impact to our town by offering legal short-term rentals impacts all other local businesses. Not only is this good for our town to capitalize by regulating the market, it should continue to find ways to responsibly follow suit with the least amount of damage to our natural resources. The short-term rental market is ever-expanding, and with that, the negative ideas and stories are being worked out through regulation by both the agencies listing them and local ordinances to allow them. Agencies such as Airbnb and VRBO continue to take measures to ensure their listings and hosts are responsible and accountable for providing safe and accurate listings. It's important to dispel notions that short-term rentals are just for massive parties and exploiting neighborhoods and ordinances who allow them. It's also important to note that neighborhoods with deed restrictions do have the ability to vote out short-term rentals, and that should be aligned to consider. I've been a short-term rental owner for the past seven years, beginning in Littleton, Colorado, just outside of Denver, and in Melbourne, Florida, and now here in town. I grew up in Dunellen, moved away, but have recently returned to this beautiful Bermuda Triangle, as I call it, because once you live here, you always find your way back without escaping. All my rentals have been legally rented by registering with the local city, county, and state, meaning I've paid to ensure I have a doing business-as-is account, a state license, a county permit, and in Melbourne, a city tax receipt for each short-term rental I own. And just, and that's just the beginning. The main portion of money I pay is to the state, county, and sales taxes from the income I've made on each property. Dunellen should also capitalize on the vacation rental market by regulating the sales of business receipts for those desiring to capitalize on our town's tourism. Having a known list of legal renters, legal rentals, and specified ordinances maintains our small-town feel and doesn't exploit our local treasure. It maintains citizens' right to live and reside without being priced out by the tourist market. The benefits of regulating short-term rentals in towns means that there could be a cap on the number of business receipts sold for short-term rentals. This ensures that the long-term rental market is not drastically impacted by rising rates of citizens who are capitalizing on the short-term market. It, may I continue?
We'll give you 30 seconds.
It creates a market for those who have obtained a business receipt to keep operating legally each year and provides a way of knowing which rentals in town are legal and a good operating standard. In order to obtain a receipt, one should provide proof of state and county licenses as evidence by adequate and evidence of adequate homeowner's insurance that provides short-term rental insurance, as most primary and secondary homeowners insurance do not provide coverage for that. This ensures the homeowners are paying taxes to the state and county and provides a tier of regulation and oversight by those entities and not the sole responsibility of our town to enforce. Especially the state, who if there are multiple rebates made, reports made on a rental, the state will investigate and potentially remove the owner's license and create fees, make fees for the homeowners by the state. I propose that the city figures out what an ideal number of acceptable vacation rentals are for our town, then sell that number of business receipts per year. The beginning priority should be given to short-term rentals who are already operating in legal rentals, meaning they have registered with the county and state.
You have to wrap it up.
They'll pay their taxes. I'll finish at the end then, if that's okay.
What?
May I finish at the end?
Yes.
I'm almost done, if that's okay.
Just keep in mind that we have business to do after the comma, right?
You're absolutely.
All right. Please, I don't want to have to make you stay here all night, but please, finish.
Thank you for your time. If I can finish at the end?
How much longer is it?
Very short. Regulating short-term rentals in town should not need more research than we already provide via city code enforcement. Some methods of enforcing legal rentals are, for example, would be investigated when reports come in by code enforcement. That creates little more resources that our city would need to pay for. Another reason to consider regulating short-term rentals is to ensure building standards and protection of our natural resources are a priority. Regulation brings higher standards and enforces supply and demand, allowing for the best rentals to thrive and those that do not fall off. A healthy tourist economy should have this competitiveness. It also allows for measures to be created and puts priority on protecting our river. As our town continues to expand, we need to be at the forefront of ensuring our most prized resources is protected. By properly regulating them, in Dunellen, we're ultimately prioritizing our citizen prosperity first, using realistic means to bring additional income and combat our town's debt.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. Now, what does he have to say? Okay, who's next? Amber. Amber, you might want to raise that microphone up just a little bit.
Amber, your baby's microphone. More like that. I was afraid to hold that one.
Name and address.
Amber Serena, 11426 Southwest Hendrick Street, Dunellen. You know, I really appreciate what Mrs. Windler had to say. I too own a fantastic vacation rental. I have a three-night minimum. I've been very successful with that. I try to keep it under control, keep the parking within my own yard, try to limit the boats that people bring. I have quiet hours from 9:00 p.m. to 8:00 a.m. I charge anywhere from $500 a night to $979 a night. And I don't have any problem getting it because this is a sought-after area. I mean, it's one of a kind, and I love my city. And so does everyone else. We are giving people an opportunity to fall in love with our river, to want to protect our river. Hopefully not move here, but, you know, we, we definitely have a gem here to share. And, you know, I would like to see some regulations as well. I'd love it if our renters had to watch a short five-minute video on what they should and should not do for the river, what they should protect, how to protect it, what they can and cannot bring on the river. So with that being said, I think, you know, as far as enforcing the sound and the noise, that's going to be on our police to do that. But if you can't bring it down to the property, again, that should be up to the city regulates. I have a dog on the list that, you know, maybe people don't want in their neighborhood, that I'm a responsible owner, and I don't let him run loose and bite people. I mean, the people that have bought these homes, and I, I did a, the city have bought a large mobile home park that was completely dilapidated and horrific and turned it into something beautiful. We're taking these old homes and beautifying our neighborhood. I pay money, a lot of money, to Marion County. Unfortunately, they don't give us any money back, and I don't think that's fair. Another discussion for another day or another fight. So we're creating a lot of jobs for cleaners, for contractors. You know, we pay our tax revenue. I mean, look at the economy. I have wealthy people staying here, and they frequent all of the restaurants and all of the little shops. We bring a lot of business, good business, into this town. It sounds like a lot of the complaints, and I can appreciate, you know, the homeowners in here that live in Blue Cove. It seems like Blue Cove HOA needs to step up and enforce their rules and regulations. It sounds like a lot of what I'm hearing is going to go back on the HOA, you know. I'm not hard to believe.
Amber, you have to wrap it up. I mean, I.
That's all I can have to say. Maybe it's time for one.
Thank you so much. Folks, I really want to hear everything you have to say. We really do. We have a lot of people that need to speak. You can see our agenda. We have about 20 items we have to go over tonight. And I've got to ask you to try to make your come three minutes. Who else would like to speak? Yes, Tim.
Tim Eske, 12140, Maple Street, Dunellen. I'm also here about the VRBOs. We only have 10 houses in our little neighborhood, if that many. Three of them are VRBOs. A fourth one just got bought across the street that is going to be a VRBO. So we have firsthand experience with the negative effects on the short-term rentals in the neighborhoods. And the other thing is, we didn't move into a neighborhood to police the VRBOs. So I find it offensive that we should be calling the police or doing whatever. We live in a neighborhood. We're not policing their VRBOs. None of the owners live in Dunellen. Only one lives in Marion County. The rest are out of state. One has just turned their garage into a living space. I don't even think, into a living space to hold more people. I don't even think the city's aware of it. The same person was telling me jokingly how when they did the permit for their deck, they called it a roof. On their dock that they had, they called it a roof. It's not a roof. It's a, it's a huge deck on top of the dock with chairs, tables, jumping platform, lights, everything. He thinks it's just funny that he got it over on the city. Well, most of the renters do show a respect that they're in a neighborhood. Too many times, especially when there's typically more than 10 to 15 people, the music gets way too loud. I don't want to hear about hours at 9 o'clock at night. We don't want to listen to it all day long. It's our neighborhood. We don't want to listen to all the glaring party and everything. It's just not right. The houses, they turn over every few days or less. The trash that accumulates at the street until trash pickup days, as these places are cleaned up, is simply a health hazard. It's inviting rodents, pests, raccoons get into it or tearing it up. The sheer amount of trash that has to be picked up, the garbage company increases the cost for all of us residents because it's not a simple family putting their trash out there. It's multiple times of 10, 15 people during between trash pickups. Also, a couple years ago, and the chief is aware of this, the VRBOs rented during the pandemic when the governor said, nobody rents. The hotels know anything. We called the police. The police did come out, chased them off, contacted the owners. As soon as that group left, there was another group that showed up, and this went on and on until the, until it was released that people could do it. So there's our police resources getting used, and the owners paid, had no penalty whatsoever. It's just, it was just do as, do as they pleased with no consequences. That's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else would like to speak? I'm sure I'll put it in. Yes. Oh, Art. You know the drill.
Yeah, Art Jones, 12163, Pommertown Way, here in Dunellen. I just want to talk about the river a little bit. This week, I was in there, one rake at a time, pulling out dead hydrilla and a lot of muck. We removed over 2,000 pounds this week.
Wow.
What?
Yeah.
Good for you.
And so we're working hard on it, and I did a kayak the other day up into Blue Cove and paddled around just to check it all out, and we are almost ready to call it Green Cove. There's a phytoplankton algae explosion in there right now, and the water is getting very green. And that's particularly concerning because as phytoplankton takes over, it will actually kill even more hydrilla. But now it's suffocating the fish and the wildlife that does live in the hydrilla. Because remember, hydrilla is not a bad plant. Creates oxygen in some fish habitat, but when it gets so dense is when it destroys everything. So if you get too much phytoplankton, it's going to kill all that living hydrilla that's still there. And the next step is more lingvia algae. And we all know lingvia algae, how horrible it is. It's a cyanobacteria, filamentous algae, and it will cause a skin rash on you. It takes oxygen out of the water. It destroys the ecosystem. It's going to create a dead Blue Cove. I don't want to see that happen. I really don't. That's why the plan that I'm developing and trying to get going, working very hard on, is going to include Blue Cove. We're going to go right up to the top of the river. Let's look at everything that needs to be done, and let's really clean up what needs to be cleaned up. It's so important, you know, to get that muck out of there and start planting eelgrass. It's funny, some people say, oh, Art, you're the big environmentalist here. And I'm like, well, actually, I'm really kind of a farmer. You know, I used to farm out in Oregon, and, you know, you've got to prepare your field before you plant. The same thing we have to do in the Rainbow River. If we want to plant that eelgrass, we've got to prepare the field, which means we've got to remove all that silt and muck and everything. So I'm pretty excited. I finally got a website up there now. Anybody who's a city council, I think hopefully you've got a note on that. It's onrakeatatime.org. And be patient. It's a work in progress, but at least it's live and it's up there. And so we're getting the ball rolling, and I've got some cards printed up, and we've got some great videos that are going to be up there soon. They videotaped the cleanup we had at the public beach, and so we're working on editing that. We're going to get that up there. And we've got some underwater footage of the beautiful eel grass. It looks so amazing. I mean, it's like stress reliever. And then we've got other good video footage showing, you know, the hydrilla and the mess that we need to clean up. So just wanted to keep up to date.
Thank you very much, sir. Anyone else who would like to speak? Yes.
Hello, Jason Krabson, 1590 West J. Williams Lane. I'm just going to be very quick here because I just want something to think about as, because I've been hearing this Airbnb stuff, is we have people that are complaining about the federal state using their authority to move people's land off of land and do things. And then they come, and then we also have the people coming to these meetings and trying to use the power of the city to stop people's Airbnb. to use the power of the city to stop people's Airbnb. So we should probably be very careful about what we do, otherwise we'll just be hypocrites.
Thank you very much. Anyone else who's seated, would you care to speak at this time? Okay, please take note that everyone has had their opportunity to speak. I understand from Ms. Odom, we do have three written comments that we want to read into the record. Ms. Odom, are you going to read them?
Yes.
Okay. Please read them so everyone can hear.
The first one is from Cindy Crandall. Subject is Blue Cove rental Airbnb. Hi, I live in Blue Cove, and I have some experience with short-term renters. I am away this week and cannot attend the meeting this evening, but I did want to share. It seems many houses are being bought up in our lovely community and turned into short-term rentals. Maybe when there were just a couple, things were fine, but recently, there has been an increasing number of transient people, some of who I'm sure are fine. However, bringing in cars and people who don't live there, but just come, use and leave, does not make the best neighbor situation. Speeding cars, loud people parties, often at one of the rentals by me, even though they are not supposed to have more than so many people or cars, they often disregard that, and there will be a yard full of cars, loud music, interesting people, and I have kids and dogs. It's just not ideal and not very safe. On one instance, I was walking my dog, and the renter had a pit bull against the rules of the homeowner. The dog was not leashed and ran across the street and attacked my dog. These people were very rude and disrespectful, to say the least. I'm lucky I have a big dog, he was able to fight him off, but what if it been my older, weaker dog or a child? We need rules around this situation. Please help us figure out how to keep our community safe and lovely. Thank you, Cindy Crandall. I have a second one from Kathy Dunn. I would like to make public comment regarding the agenda item addressing short-term rentals in the city of Dunellen. My name is Kathy Dunn, and my address is 11386 Hendricks Drive, 34432. I am in favor of adopting regulations addressing short-term rentals. I live two doors away from a rental that sleeps 25 people per day. The rental is occupied almost 365 days per year. Commonly, at least four families split the rental fee of more than $450 per day, and of course have at least four cars and two boat trailers parked in the driveway, usually more. The property also regularly is used for, used as an event venue for large numbers of people parking along Hendricks Drive for these events, leaving muddy roadsides along, roadsides along Hendricks Drive. I feel this is very unfair to those of us who are single-family residents, who have basically been doomed to live in the middle of a resort. When trying to entertain friends or family, we are surrounded by screaming hordes of children and partying adults. I feel that there should be more regulations regarding the number of people who are renting from a single-family home, and also for limiting larger tenants in these rentals. We are in great fear that more homes will inevitably become rentals that will cause us to reconsider living here, contributing to our community and moving elsewhere. Our town is currently composed of 36% rentals, little to no code enforcement, and consequently little incentive from landlords to maintain their properties. This leads to the excessive block that we are now witnessing. It seems to me that the owners of these short-term rentals are profiting from short-term rentals by bringing in tourists to overcrowd our river and roadways while the single-family owners foot the bill. How can our city develop a sense of community when it is populated, it is populated by people who live elsewhere? Respectfully, Kathy Dunn, resident and taxpayer of Dunellen. One last one. This is from Keja Hale. Subject, June 8, 2022 workshop public comment. I would like the following email to be read into the public record on 6/8/22. My name is Keja Hale. I live at 11676 East Blue Cove Drive. My husband and I moved to Dunellen in January 2015 after building our dream home in Blue Cove. Since we have had two children, I homeschool both, and we plan to live here the rest of our lives. In 2018, our neighbor started renovating, renting out his home through vrbo.com. Shortly after, the renters started to come and were obvious to the quiet neighborhood. Then the problems started. Problems included the following: excessive cars, 78 vehicles parked overnight, garbage in the river behind and on the street in front of the short-term rental, guest-feeding alligators, guests publicly urinating off the dock into the canal, loud noise and bad language during the day and lasting well into the night after 9:00 p.m., occupied RV camper parked overnight in the driveway, smell of marijuana wafting into our yard from the backyard of the short-term rental, unleashed dogs entering and pooping in both our front and backyard, unleashed dog on our porch and running all over the neighborhood. I am aware the city cannot stop short-term rentals in the city, but I ask you to please take careful consideration when driving the city ordinance on short-term rentals. I would expect anyone renting my neighbor's home to abide by all city, county, state laws, and all owners of short-term rentals to take full responsibility for renting to guests or our law-abiding citizens. I would expect any guests to be unnoticed, as if they had also lived in the neighborhood. Please consider limiting the number of vehicles staying overnight. Please consider limiting the number of occupants staying overnight. Please consider requiring short-term rentals that allow animals to have a fenced area for the animal. Please consider requiring background checks on all potential occupants of the short-term rental to identify and disallow sexual offenders. Please consider requiring short-term rental owner to register annually with the city, identifying a responsible party and requiring the responsible party to be on location within one hour of any problem.
Very good. That concludes our public comment. Something I should have brought to your attention beforehand, I would ask that we would consider adjusting the order of the agenda. We do have, as our guest, Representative Masuulu here. We're very excited to have him here, and I would suggest that we switch the department head reports, which can be lengthy, and switch him to speak in front of that.
That's fine.
Okay. Representative Masuulu, you've just been moved up one notch, but not quite yet.
Thank you.
You will be after our board reports. Okay, number two on the agenda, Dunellen Chamber and Business Association report, Judy.
I'm the executive director of the Dunellen Chamber and Business Association. We have two new members this month. We have Greater Dimensions Christian Assembly and Farmers in Charms, Angelina Godfrey Agency. Our upcoming events are June 10th, we have Janice Whitefield's retirement from Pizza Pub. She sold out.
That's right.
She didn't say what time. I don't know what time, but I know it's the 10th. I think it's going to be an all-day thing. June 11th is Saturday. We have Barbers and Beers Networking Party at 1:00 p.m. June 14th is our board meeting at 6:00 p.m. June 17th, we have Urban Fighting for True Health and Big Bear at 1:00 p.m. June 21st, we have the Chamber Dinner Mixer at Rainbow Springs Village Church, and this time it's going to be catered by Subo Comal County, and that starts at 5:30. June 24th, we have Whistle Stop Cafe at the Greater Dunellen Historical Society Train Depot. They have food served from 5 to 8, music from 7 to 9, and this month their musical guest is Remedy Tree. And then July 9th, we have the American Legion Christmas in July 9th. There's a couple of other things that I can get to put on here, but one of them is, I know you guys are just going to talk about the wayfinding signs, and I'm just wondering if we could put a sign showing where the chamber is, since it is a visitor's center, if we could consider that. Also, I have Danielle Stevens here from Stevens Labs with an update on the website. So if you want to give her a minute to-
Please.
Okay.
She said she was referring to you on that sign, I think, so take that note down, all right?
I am Danielle Stevens. I live at 1590 Southwest Eagle Drive, Dunellen, Florida 34431. And I am here to show you guys the website. The website is finished. I will be showing it to the board members next week on Tuesday, so that they can do their final critiques, and we can get the website published. I am also planning on showing off the website in all of its detail at the next Dunellen Chamber Dinner Mixer, so that all of the businesses can see what it's like and how they can get their business on the website if it's not already there. Ms. Odom, would you please go to discoverdunellen.com for me?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Maybe. I'll be Hannah. We are having some van rip problems today. Optical fails, has some problems, so.
I can also send you guys an email with a way to get into the website, and then my notes that I'd like you to go through specifically to see, because there are different aspects that you guys requested, such as randomizing of listings, so that, so that it's not the same listing every time we go to the restaurants page, or every time we go to the stay page. I also would, wanted to show off to you that we are putting the VRBOs on the website under the lodging, so your individual listings can be on there. And everywhere, on almost every page, we are putting what you're expected to do on the river. The responsibilities of you are on the river. And so there's a page for all of that. But so, I appreciate you, Ms. Odom, so much, and I will do that. I will create an email to all of you and send you the link with a way to look at it, and then you guys can go through my list of notes. Okay?
Thank you very much.
All right, I appreciate your time.
Possibly at a later date, you can sign up and give a short presentation and show us what you've done.
I can definitely do that.
Rather than, you know, trying to squeeze it in, you know, like you're doing right now.
Okay.
Get ahold of Andy and see what we can do.
All right. I'll still send out that email. Thank you guys so much for your time.
Thanks for your hard work.
Okay, we have completed number two, which is the chamber report. We go to item number three, board reports. Do we have any reports from the board? Ms. DiArbel. For those that don't know, Ms. DiArbel is our chairman of our planning commission.
Thank you. I'll keep it very brief. From the DiArbel, 116th Wood Camp Drive. Our last board meeting, we had three main topics of discussion. Kathy Dunn, which is an active member of our board, and involved a lot in community service, made a presentation focusing on the blight that we have in a lot of our neighborhoods, so that we can address that and try to start enhancing some of these properties. Also, short-term rentals was part of our discussion, looked at, part of the ordinance that is being written, and there'll be more discussion, perhaps meetings, joint with the planning commission and the council as we go forward. So for those of you who are very concerned, rest assured that it is being worked on. And then lastly, but we're not sure where that is, Chief McQuaid had indicated that there was some discussion maybe about the location of the police station, so we'll see where that, that leads us. But I'm just very encouraged by the participation in the community. We still have vacancy on the planning commission, so I would encourage some of you that are first speak tonight, get involved and give an application, so you can be part of that process. Thank you.
Very good. And I would like to back up Chairman DiArbel. With the planning commission as a much underappreciated function of the city, they are the ones that really discuss the planning, the zoning, recommendations. They do 90, 95% of the work before that comes toward council. Council is very dependent on their expertise, their diligence, in bedding out things. So if you are interested in it and you are eligible, we embrace anyone that wants to step up and get involved. This particular council does embrace participation, and we encourage those that care about the city to step up and do your part. Okay, our board reports. Anyone else? Okay, we are finished. Before we invite our guest speaker up, we do have in the audience our representative, Ralph Masuulu. Representative Masuulu is now our representative because of redistricting. He is entering his, he's been a six-year representative, three terms, that normally his district ended behind us on the, on the Lefkuchy River, but it has been redistricted, so now he is our representative. Representative Phil Harding, who was a representative, he has been, he's in another little district that's north of us. We reached out to Representative Masuulu and gave him the invite to come and make his presence in Dunellen and see his new constituency, and let us get to know him as he gets to know us. Very pleased and happy that you have accepted our, our invitation, and I'd like to invite you up, Representative Masuulu.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate it. And council members. I'm Ralph Masuulu. My address is 3244 West Castle Pines Loop. I actually live in Citrus County, not here. But I want to talk to you a little bit about the Florida Legislature. I'm going to try to answer some of your concerns. I'm sure a few of you may be here with concerns about our road building projects with the state, so I'll try to address some of those with you as well. But I want to tell you, first of all, how much the Florida Legislature spends time thinking about our citizens, probably better than any legislature in the entire country. Most of the bills, policy bills we pass, concern you all. And the reason being is, we believe in Florida that we are a free state, meaning the people rule. Many states in our country, as you look around and you see what's happening with our culture, with our economy, with our education, they are controlled states. They're not free states anymore. The people have to basically succumb to the will of the governing bodies. In Florida, we're not like that. One of the things that we've done in Florida, that actually was my bill, was to prevent vaccine mandates. It was something that is extremely important to our governor. It was something we have a special session for, and we were able to prevent vaccine mandates, not only in, in the individual particular businesses, but for the state in general. Our governor has fought actually to try to get masks off of airplanes, and as you know, there was a court order to be able to do that, even against the Biden administration just recently. We took masks out of our schools. We put our students back in schools. And the reason we did that is because, again, remember, we are a free state, where the people rule. The people are our priority. When you look at some of our policies, and I know you probably don't want me to be up here pontificating for a long time, but the policies we've made just in this last session on education, on our environment, on our economy, all have to do with putting you first, with making things for you better. Some of our education policies had to do with increasing teachers' pay, decreasing the amount of tests, increasing freedom for our students, allowing, particularly in higher education, having zones where there could be free speech, having people that do not have the ability to protest oftentimes, to where their protests would be violated, protecting homes. And if, if you noticed in the news even today, you saw that there was someone that was arrested that was going to try to assassinate Judge Kavanaugh in Washington, DC. Those type of individuals would not be able to protest in Florida because of our laws. We believe residences should be protected. Those are sacred. Your children are growing up there. There's plenty of places to protest, like the city hall, like government buildings, but not individual residences. They belong to those individual people that are free in our state. So I want to talk to you about some policies that I'm sure are particularly important to you, and that's our roads. First of all, we need to know that in Florida, we balance our needs, and it's extremely important. You know, I'm a physician by, by trade, and oftentimes, a physician is responsible for lowering the temperature. So I'm going to try to lower the temperature in this room a little bit about- So I'm going to try to lower the temperature in this room a little bit about what you're thinking as far as the turnpike coming through this area. Let me tell you the original goal of that turnpike connector. Currently, when you look at our state, and what brought this to our attention was a hurricane that we had a few years ago, where if you would look at 75 from the air, it ended up being a parking lot. We really need evacuation routes to keep our people safe in Florida. So when you look at the east side of our state, we have a very strong network of highways with I-95, and then as you get down to the middle of the state where Orange County, Orlando, is, the turnpike. And as those two really strong highways go south, that's where most of the population of our state currently is located, from Orlando to the southeast corner of Florida. The west side of Florida has not been developed nearly as much. Areas like Dan Ellen, areas like Citrus County are those rural gems, and I've heard someone say that was talking earlier about what a gem your little city is. And it is a gem, and I'm sure you also know the history of Dan Ellen, and it was at one time a very industrial city. It's not that easy. But we need to preserve that environment. And to be able to preserve that environment, we need to listen to the people that live in those communities. So the Suncoast Parkway, and I will disagree with the individual that said that 60-some percent of the people did not want the Suncoast Parkway. You have to realize if certain people come into a particular room and they all vote, that doesn't represent the majority of the people that live in an area. That just represents the amount of people that come to that particular meeting. As a legislature, I have to represent everyone that sends me to Tallahassee, both those people that voted for me and those that didn't. And I try to do that to the best of my ability. And I can tell you, most of the people that are in Tallahassee behave similarly, and it's an honor and a privilege to be able to represent you. When you look at highway construction in our state, Florida has a remarkable way of doing things in an ecologically preserving manner. One of the bills that I ran through my committee two years ago established the wildlife corridor. Florida is one of the few states in the country that has that, and I'm hoping that sometimes we can develop that corridor, not just through Florida, but go all the way up through the eastern side of the United States, through Maine. In those wildlife corridors, we have made provisions that when we do do highways, we consider the wildlife, how the habitats, their migrations. We consider also pedestrians. We consider bike traffic. And when you look at the Suncoast Parkway, you will see it has all those attributes incorporated, particularly in the newer sections. As we continue to develop highways, in the way we develop highways, we will continue to basically incorporate your comments, the needs of our community, as well as the needs of our state as we grow. Now, look specifically at the turnpike coming through this area. I can tell you, the intent was to never build that particular road until the Suncoast Parkway was complete to I-10, because it wouldn't make any sense to do it otherwise. That road will not be completed most likely for the next 20 to 30 years. So that's one thing that I'm hoping lowers your temperature. The second thing is, when FDOT put out those five particular proposed routes, now remember, they were proposed routes. They weren't set in stone. Those proposed routes were supposed to go through evaluation and public comment. And I think you all, the people in Citrus County, the individuals in Marion County, made very clear that you do not want that road going through your community. You do not want that road going through any ecologically sensitive areas around the Wiltokuchi River, for instance, or also some of the prairie areas that we have in our state. And I can assure you, I will never vote for that road to go through Dan Ellen. I won't vote for it to go through Citrus County. But that road may go through the intersection between Marion and Sumter County, and then perhaps proceed north in some other way. But there will be in time more highways in our state. And I can ask, I won't ask for a show of hands, but how many of you have traveled on an interstate? Just think about it. Well, you don't have to show them. But I'm sure all of us have. And you know when Eisenhower built the interstate system back in the 50s, he had the same issues that we're having today. But today, we have more technology to be able to work through. One thing that we've prioritized in our state is autonomous driving. Someday, we will have autonomous driving vehicles. We will have autonomous actual aircraft in our state. I might not live to see it. You all might not live to see it, but your children will. And the way we change transportation, it's important to keep in mind that there is this dynamics with our culture, with our society, and with the state of Florida that right now, we're the fastest-growing state in the country. And we will continue to be that way because we're winsome. We are a magnet for individuals that want freedom, that want liberty, that want a way of life that you are enjoying right now. And so what can we do? It would be nice if we could put a door up and say, oh, we're not letting anybody else in our state. Right? I'm sure some of you would want that. Of course, you're here. And perhaps a hundred years ago, there may have been some people that say, we don't let anybody else in our state, and you wouldn't have been able to come. That's not going to happen. So what we need to do is we need to be very smart and wise in how we do our planning. We have to listen to everybody's comments. And we have to take those comments in that crucible, mash them down, spill them out, and find a way that meets the needs of what our state will have now and in the future, and the desires and wants of the people that we are here to represent today. And that's very difficult, but it can be done, and it's done incrementally with teen little steps. I'll use Art Jones as an illustration since he's here tonight. He does one rake at a time. Well, that one rake at a time has set into motion a plan where our state has spent $3 billion in water restoration in the last five years. That set in plan, an area where we have now the first aquatic preserve in 35 years off the coast of Citrus, Orlando, and Casco County, where we preserve sea grass, where we prevent development, and where we will continue to have economic value. And you said, what does that preserve mean outside of the fact that we'll have better amenities than we do in the Indian River or Boone? We'll have better sea grass, we'll have better scallops. Well, to these three counties, that produces $500 million in economic value, $500 million. So it helps feed our families, which is another important function of what the legislature tries to do. We want to protect the people. We want to protect your way of life. We want to protect your livelihood. And to do that, we need your involvement. And I have to compliment each and every one of you for being here tonight because it means something. This process of government that we have in our country is very, very difficult. It's deliberative, meaning it doesn't just come together. We don't have an autocracy where somebody says, we're going to do this, and that's all we're going to do. We don't. We have a republic, democracy, where each person has a say. Each person has a vote. Each person has power, and they're empowered by the constitution that we have in place today. And that constitution is sacred to our way of life. Once we destroy that, if we ever do, and there are entities out there currently trying to break that down, we lose our substance of being an American, which is extremely unique. But also, that deliberative process is extremely fragile, and you have to be careful in what you hear and also in what you say, because there's a truth out there. And while everybody's entitled to their opinion, there's only one truth, and that's what we need to strive to get to. So I will tell you that we are always open to listen, and I don't know anyone in the Florida Legislature that doesn't take their constituency extremely serious and spend an extremely limited time. And ma'am, you mentioned that, I know already, responded to you over the phone, they sent you emails. I personally wrote you an email. Now, I don't, no, they responded to you after the first time. I wrote you after five times.
Yes, she's wonderful. She's not my representative. You are.
Ma'am, I'll be honest with you.
You have been here for work. The office is now open.
Ma'am, I am. Please.
I'm sorry.
Representative, go ahead.
We don't respond personally to each and every person because I represent about 180,000 people. It would be impossible for me to do. You know, Joe Biden's my president. You know what my chances of even talking to him as an elected official would be? I personally wrote you an email, which I don't usually do, because I wanted to explain that process to you so you have a better understanding of it. Now, I'm hoping you do now. You wrote me back, and that's important. So I would tell you this. If you, any of you would want to contact us, you will get a response. You'll get a response, and you'll have a great answer. It may not be what you want to hear. You know, if I get people asking me things you couldn't believe, then that's okay, because that's all part of the job that I have. That's what I've signed up for. But again, we all have an opinion, and that's fine, but we need to work together to get to a truth that works for all of us. So if you have any questions for me, Mayor, or the council, or however you want to deal with that, I don't want to change your programs, but I'll answer anything you'd like to ask.
I would just like to say to you, this is the beginning of a relationship with you, the city. I know representatives all come up for reelection every two years, so November you're up for reelection, correct?
Yes.
So it's exciting to me knowing that you are a three-term representative with the standing that goes with that. And I'm also very aware of how influential you have been improving the water quality of the springs in Crystal River. I know you've had a lot to do with that. And if you're successful in your election, we're hoping that you'll put that same effort into helping us clean up the Rainbow River as you did with the Crystal River.
And we'll look forward to working with you.
And I just would like to say thank you, and, you know, the city of Dan Ellen is a little different. We do get turnouts in our meetings, so please, you know, don't speak to our super or my cousin or my cousin's super. But please feel free to use, you know, come here if you'd ever like to do a meeting greet with the citizens that you represent that you haven't had a chance to meet yet. I think that'd be an excellent campaign idea. See your assistant back there shaking her head. So I just want to let you know, I did, I was the chairwoman for the Marion County TPO, and I did sit on the EMCOR meeting for, what was it, 13, 18 months? I get a little, you know, during the COVID, and I listened to every single person that did speak regarding the northern turnpike extension. I took notes. I listened to each and every one of them, and the entire panel at that time did recommend back to the state a no-build, that it just economically and environmentally and a human connection was just not the right thing for our area. It wasn't just a few people in a room raising their hands, I know, but I just want to let you know that we did do a lot of research, and a lot of us, I mean, and our Marion County Commissioner Kathy Bryant as well sat on that same panel, and we all came with the same decision of the no-build. So it is a countywide, and Levy County as well was there, and Citrus County Commissioners. So it definitely is what your constituents, since you're new to this area, just to let you know, this is what your constituents honestly and truthfully believe. We've been, some of us have been here for over 100 years, so just to let you know, that's something that we do take important. We appreciate you saying that you would not support a build through this area, even if it is 25 to 30 years from now, because I don't want my daughter doing any funny dances on my grave yelling at me, okay?
Very good. Well, you need to be consistent with that because...
It's been consistent. Even in 1999, when I was sitting on the city council, there's a news article that says I was against it back then as well.
Good, good. Ms. Kenny?
Well, I think that Councilwoman Hanchire said it all, and I would just say amen to that.
Would you like to say something to sleep?
Thank you, representative, for coming and sharing.
You're welcome. Okay, thank you. Thank you.
I just feel for the people and their concern regarding the no-build.
I think you'll find Dan Ellen to be a very warm, very friendly place. I think Vice Mayor was correct. This area, even though it's a little, small town, it is a very politically engaged city. Turnouts like this are not unusual. We have had turnouts for standing room only, depending on the agenda. So this is a populace that does follow politics and definitely lets us know what they feel. There's no question about it.
Good. Thank you all again for having me, and I hope you have a blessed evening.
Thank you so much. Okay, now we go back to item number four, which is our department head reports. And who would like to start, Troy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council. I'll make this short as possible, but a few topics we need to bring to everybody's attention. This afternoon, about an hour or so before the council workshop, I was contacted by an individual who works for a company, an aquatic weed control company, who has a contract just up the street from City Hall here on River Drive, requesting permission to use the boat ramp for the rear portion of City Hall's property along the river, bring in a dump truck to bring the weeds to this area, load up the dump truck, and haul it off. I did explain to him that I would bring it to council's attention if council wishes to give a different answer than I did. But I told him at this time I would not authorize that, and I would not recommend the council let this be authorized because the condition of the boat ramp as it is is questionable, and his alternative of using the grass area to the right-hand side of the dock that's out there is an absolute no. We're not pulling a dump truck across the back of the property unless council directs me otherwise.
Troy, just for clarification, this is a private contractor with a private business asking us if he can use the boat ramp to complete his contract on...
With the, yes, his contract with the resident. So I did explain to him that since now the project has already begun, the weeds have been pulled and are sitting on the bank, I recommended he start thinking of alternative ways of getting it to the street and hauling it off safely, so...
What are you looking for from council?
I just want to make council aware of this, and if you agree with my decision to deny him the opportunity of using the boat ramp for a dump truck loading dub...
Well, you've already made a decision, correct, in your head, and I would back you up.
Yes.
Yes, we get a phone call.
Yes.
I back you up. I back you up.
Okay. I'm going to let you have the decision stamps. Okay, a few quick topics here. Parking and recreation. Ernie Mills Park was, had a little bit of graffiti and some minor vandalism a couple weekends ago. We painted over it with some primer, and this Friday, we will be out there with the volunteers repainting the entire pavilion at Ernie Mills Park. So that'll be our Friday workday with volunteers.
The pavilion project at the city...
The pavilion project at City Beach has been pending corrections to be made on blueprints before we can get an approved permit to build. Notified today by the engineering firm. We do have the new blueprints in hand. They've been emailed today. Our copies are in the mail being delivered probably over the next few days. We will be processing our building permit through Regina's office tomorrow. And I hope to hear directly from the contractor before Monday to give council an idea of when construction will begin. Okay. Blue Run Park overflow parking. We have a report about some deterioration and degradation of the entry into the park from stormwater runoff, making it very rough for people to get in and out. We went out there last week, right after receiving that report, did some minor repair and corrections to the parking lot and fill. After further review of it, I reached out to two contractors. One showed up the very next day to give me an estimate on making a permanent entry into the overflow parking on San Jose Boulevard out of asphalt and redirecting the stormwater to follow the swales along the roadway as intended. So I have the first quote. I will be meeting with the second contractor tomorrow around 1:00, 1:30. So hopefully by Monday, I will have an option for council to make a decision if we want to just continue to do temporary repairs and maintenance or go with a more permanent entry. Rough estimate, about $10,000 or less.
But not paving the whole thing?
No, we are not paving the whole parking lot. We will be recutting the ditch or swales along the edge of San Jose and putting asphalt in there. 50 feet in from the road, 20 feet wide, so cars can come and go side by side.
Okay, Ms. Odom, put that on the agenda for Monday, please.
All right. So I'm hoping to have that second estimate by Monday. If not, we'll follow through. But in the meantime, the temporary minor repairs have been holding up. Okay, under roads and streets, Cedar Street and Ohio Street project is moving forward. The water and sewer have completely, water and sewer department have completely gotten their stuff taken care of and are out of the way of the contractor. I spoke with the contractor this morning. We will start seeing activity as early as tomorrow, no later than Monday morning on the asphalt for Cedar Street and Ohio. Council, you also may have noticed and received emails notifying you that the traffic light here at 41 and 484 was Pennsylvania and Williams. One of the light poles was hit in an impact collision about two and a half, three years ago. The state inspector has deemed it to be integrity unsafe. They have put up temporary poles and a guide wire to hold up the lighting until the state moves forward with their repaving project. So this temporary pole system with the lighting that we see out there now could be there till 2024, 2025 budget process. I had told you before that the state had determined or decided to repave from the bridge to Walmart. They have now decided to include a redesign of that intersection to make it more accessible or easier to use with the right-hand turn on the Williams Street. So almost eliminating that triangle portion out of the roadway. So I will follow through with paying attention to their designs and working with their designers and bringing it to council the best I can. Still under roads and streets. Recently, we have identified on Walnut Street that many sections of sidewalk are broken, elevated, or creating trip hazards or risk. So we have done a full evaluation from one end of Walnut Street to the other end, identified 19 5-foot by 5-foot concrete panels of sidewalk that need to be replaced. I have reached out to the same contractor that we used on Palm, the Renata, that we did a couple of months ago to provide me with a quote. We estimate that project to come in at about $5,000. It is in the budget under the CRA for sidewalk repair and replacements. Other than that, I did attend the Florida League of Cities Insurance Hurricane readiness conference yesterday down in Orlando. I hope they start doing Zoom on those because I hate driving on I-4. So you got license for it or absolutely no bill? But anyway, it's some interesting things about our insurance carrier and their partnerships there of better coverage, better opportunity and more things available to the city in preparing us and getting us through in the event that we are impacted by a hurricane. So we're working with Jan Smith and our city clerk's office to make sure that we're all on the same page, ready for this hurricane season coming up. And Marion County EOC, I just got a notification today. We were supposed to do a hurricane readiness or readiness there at EOC a little over a week or two ago. As a result of the COVID breakout, they postponed it. I received notification. It is rescheduled for this coming Tuesday, 15th that day. I didn't have my glasses on when I read it, so maybe.
Yeah, it's the 17th, Marion County EOC, it's the 17th. Unless they changed that again.
Good, very well, babe.
Yes, 17th that day.
Anyways, I will be attending that. But what brought this up in my attention is I was teaching classes at EOC this weekend for volunteer search teams and was informed by Preston, the director of EOC, that they are now considering, if not already ordering in, an automated sandbagging machine. So I'm hoping we get to be the first ones using it here so I don't have to continue to make those makeshift sandbag adapters. So please keep the train across if something does happen.
The truth, the truth, Troy, is we never have these, right?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. And the last thing I have to bring to council's attention that we were notified by the art gallery several weeks ago, if not over a month ago, that the front door assembly of the art gallery building is deteriorated. It's old, it needs to be replaced, but also they had an attempt of a break-in. So there's been a modification to the lock system there to keep it secure in the meantime. We have reached out to a local contractor who has made the gesture or offer that he will replace the door assembly free of charge to the city as long as we provide the materials to be used. So, and he will have available time as early as early August. So we're in the process of identifying and purchasing a whole new front door entry assembly for the art gallery. Okay? Any questions?
Very good.
Did I miss anything that we were working on and I haven't given updates?
Okay, Ms. Odom, please next.
Thank you.
Regina, please speak up so we all figure what to say.
Yes, thank you. Well, I have, I have an update on the permitting that we've done for the month of May. I have 41 permits that were done during the month of May. I have 10 of those being commercial, 29 residential and one business. The name of the business is Sauce and Loaded. It's located at 2109, 21, I'm sorry, 20199 East Pennsylvania Avenue, next to Donovan's. So that's, that's already working. And we've done about 37 new cases during the month of May in code enforcement for a total of 80 new cases for the, since the beginning of the year. Most of them were done in the months of April and May. And we're, we're going to continue working on code enforcement, hopefully getting these cases to good compliance. So far, 37, 36 have complied and we're still working on three from last year. And just so you know, in the, in the entire, for the entire year of 2021, there were 79 cases of code enforcement. So we've surpassed the amount of cases that we've been working with over the year in just a couple of months. So we're, we're working hard on that, trying to make it happen and getting the city to look better every day. And that's, that's one more thing. I have the billboards. We had done a little research on billboards. There are five billboards in total around the city. We've located the, the companies that did these billboards. Most of them were done back in, in the 90s, 80s. So I've, I've reported this to Andrew, to, to the city attorney to continue with the, with the ordinance for the billboards. And that's pretty much all my reports for today.
Any questions from council, comments? I have one. On the code enforcement issues, is there a common thread that repeats itself more than others? Meaning, what would be the, out of the 80 or 90 code enforcement citations or letters? What's the one that's most common that people are doing?
Daring vehicles, elevated properties.
Vehicles?
Vehicles, yes.
And abandoned vehicles?
Right.
Abandoned vehicles in a property?
Yes, and, and homes with like uncapped yards and things of that nature.
Things that you see from the, from the road as you're driving by?
Exactly.
Very good. Ms. Odom?
Do you have anything, Dan?
Just one thing. Most of my items are on the agenda, agenda tonight, but just one thing I want to, you all need to put on your calendar, June 22 at 3:00 PM for our first budget workshop.
I'm not there that day.
You're going to miss all the fun.
What day did you say?
June 22. It's a Wednesday. Three, three.
First budget? Oh, it's exciting.
Okay, continue.
To, just to the request that they had made for a date on the possibility to increase police impact fees.
Pull the microphone closer to you, Ms. Mel.
Say it for you, Dan?
Yes, ma'am. Now that you're saying what I promised I did. And I guess I don't, well, basically, what we would need to do to be able to increase the police impact fees is to have another formal study performed by a consultant. Because the, any fee that the city adopts must be debatable at a period long. The only way to do that is with a professional study, as was done the first time. I have not been able to see what that would cost. So council, if you have something you would like to pursue, absolutely, I can, you know, find out at least from an original consultant who we may want to engage because you'll have primarily the information from the first study. But I can see what a charge would be going forward.
The amount of, I ask you for round numbers. Here we go. In a year, what anticipated impact fees do we collect? The number?
I'm sorry, I don't have that number with me, but I believe we've collected maybe around $6,000 so far.
So we've collected $6,000 and now we're going to have to hire someone to do a study so we can increase that?
Yes, sir.
What happens if the study costs more than $6,000?
That's a risk you take.
So then we have $12,000 and we pay $6,000 for the study and we're right back where we were.
Maybe it increases exponentially or maybe we won't. And you don't know until you have a formal study. But it's also based on evidence and it is for the public. So it can, our actions can increase exponentially if we get into a greater building boom or they can completely slow down after a while if nobody continues to develop.
Well, this is something, Ms. Odom, under your direction. This doesn't need to have council approval to investigate into this and report back to us, right? Oh, do it.
And that's all I have.
Very good.
Chief, you got anything?
Almost something quick. This involves running a hard bargain. Unfortunately, some of our systems have been buying gift cards to pay the IRS to get their loved ones out of the hard country, to get their son out of jail to, for various reasons. Do not get a gift card to pay anybody anything. It will, it is a scam. Right now, they're doing deportation, members of the military, even to keep your utilities on. They're saying if you've got 30 minutes or we're going to turn your power off and to get a gift card. So if they're asking for a gift card specifically to pay out the IRS, it is false. So just be aware.
What else, ma'am?
I think we covered the one. I just have a couple of things.
Are you going to make comments on the appropriations being approved for our road? Do you want to comment to that?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, good.
Yeah, I just got an email from Jim Croyard, which was the same email that we received. We've not received any sort of official notification other than an email. And I haven't been able to locate any sort of press release that actually identified the project in House Bill 5001. It was signed by the governor last week. The town appropriation was approved. $1 million for the Miltonville Trail on East Pennsylvania Avenue and access across the existing bridge. So that money.
That's a major victory for Dan Allen. For the east part of Pennsylvania will be reconfigured with turn lanes along sidewalks or access to the bridge, about over the bridge.
Yes, yes, there will be a pedestrian path built on the existing.
So for those who have shown concern of people walking across the Ripon River Bridge with no protection, will now, that will now be put in. So these are sort of things that take years to take. It's very frustrating when you.
Put your shoulder to the wheel to get something like this done. You might talk about it in 2019 and it might be 2022 when it's finally done, even though everybody.
Recording in progress.
Even though everybody in 2019 agreed to it, it still takes three years to get done. So now that the money is approved, probably going to take a couple of years at least to get the project done. So my representative, Basu, said governance is a slow-moving, methodical process.
One of the things I've learned in my nearly four years on the council, what works in public and private business, it's not the work the government works. It's a few steps slower. Okay, that's good news. Anything else?
I was also asked to give an update on the status of the Blue Run Park restroom project. I did send you all an email earlier today, but the only thing I have to report is that we did send the financial commitment letter of $175,000 to the city on May 26, I'm sorry, to the county. I haven't heard anything back from them. I have reached out to FGUA and US Water a couple of times now to see if they would partner with us in that effort to put their commitment in writing to the county. I've not heard anything back from them after a couple of attempts. I know that the county is also working with them to try to get the estimates for the construction of the utilities. And the county will not be able to move the project forward until they receive those calls, which as of today, they had not. So.
Thank you. Just a recap on that, if you're not familiar with it. You've been working for years to try to get a nice restroom at Blue Run Park rather than the three quarter lets. And the county just recently has committed $425,000 to that effort to build a nice restroom. You've also made a commitment to over $25,000 to build a weather cooler. So here again, this is one of those projects that's just methodically kind of going through. So here again, this is one of those projects that's just methodically kind of going through, let's hope, through, and we can get that put together pretty soon. Anything else, Mandy?
No, sir.
Is that, uh, finished with the, uh, reports?
Yes.
Okay. We are, if you're following on the agenda, we're at, uh, number six, presentation on the short-term rentals. This is a continuation of the, some of the comments that have already been made. Dave Porter's gonna make a presentation. Hey, keep in mind, we've got, uh, fourteen more things to go.
Yes, I understand. I will try to call back and scan still. I may take order. I live at one ninety-five, East Busco Drive, um, in Dan Allen. So, I'd like to talk to you about short-term rentals and regulations. So...
Wow, look at that. A rainbow, a double rainbow on the Rainbow River. Friend of mine said that. He said that was just an awesome experience.
Glorific.
Yeah, glorific. And so, at the end of that rainbow, there's pot of gold, right? Yeah, the Rainbow River. So, so that pot of gold in the Rainbow River is really what brings people to Dan Allen. Um, but it also brings a lot of entrepreneurs to Dan Allen. And, uh, we've seen that challenge in a lot of different ways. We saw that at Blue Run Park, right? Um, and so, capitalism is a great thing in America, but there has to be balance. If you take it into a street, you can overwhelm the Rainbow River. You buy it. But it's not just the Rainbow River. At the pop, at the end of that rainbow, is also houses and neighborhoods. And really, neighborhoods in Dan Allen is what we are really famous for. The people, and how kind they are, how they work together, and, uh, how we know each other. So that's not common for everybody in Dan Allen now, but still in our neighborhoods, there's that camaraderie of knowing people, talking to people, getting along. Okay? So, so this is the American dream. This is really the American dream, right here. It's a common house, it could be anybody's house. But, but, but think back, for a lot of us, it's way, way back, but think about the first house that you ever bought. Wow, wow, that's, that's like, anybody that works hard to save can buy a house in America. That's a big deal. Think about your first house, when you owned it, you saved money, and you got it, right? So, so it's special to you. And those homes is where you, you had memories, right? And, and, and you played outside, you had social events, and then for some of us, you had kids, right? And think about all the holidays. And holidays are really about the house, a lot of, and, and memories and pictures. Think about how many pictures you have inside of your house on holidays, and your kids go outside and play. That is the American dream. That's what we all, that's what we all remember. And so, so then, from my experience, your kids have kids. Well, that's good stuff there. That is good stuff for your kids. That's what it's really all about. And so then they start that new cycle of growing up in a house, having holidays, remembering that, playing outside. The Florida League of Cities, the Florida League of Cities wrote currently to the legislature, um, about homes. It says the permanent residence is typically the largest investment a family will ever make in their lifetime, with a homestead held sacred in popular culture as the heart and center of the family, the home base. And permanent residents within residential neighborhoods are, are, um, that is the, the friendships and the special norms that, that people getting together in the community work together amongst other property owners. And as you walk down the street, talking to your neighbors and stuff like that, we used to talk about the parties that we had and stuff. Nowadays, we talk about what medical procedures you just had. Typically, hotels and motels are in commercial zoning areas, okay? There's a reason for that. There's a reason. So, so the Florida Legislature has spoken, and they say that in two thousand eleven, that if a city doesn't have an existing ordinance preventing short-term rentals, that you can't stop that. You can't stop them. So now, in residential neighborhoods, we have hotels and resorts popping up everywhere. That stood until two thousand fourteen, and they revised that, and they said, no longer can, uh, the cities, if you're not grandfathered in, you still can't prevent short-term rentals as far as their frequency or their location. But, they changed that, said, but you can regulate, because it was out of control. It was really out of control. So, so there's a different rule that I heard for a long, long time. If you, city didn't have an ordinance in two thousand eleven for short-term rentals, you can't do anything. That is not true. Chris Farber has an ordinance that they have for short-term rentals, they're not allowing it. They had it back in two thousand five, their grandfather did, except for two alone in Brooklyn. Down on my list. After that two thousand fourteen amendment, a lot of cities started working on regulations. Dan Allen is a little behind. We're probably four or five years behind in a lot of different cities. So, so, so with this dream home that we have, and, and all of us, all of us have held on to that experience, so, so you can't prevent short-term rentals from being in residential neighborhoods. If we'll go back just a minute, so, so it kind of takes away from your dream home of you, 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 you have that camaraderie in your neighborhood. So you can't stop short-term rentals from being in R one, senior family residential neighborhoods. But you can control it. So, so that dream of what you'll always remember is kind of a bad way to build it. Certainly, certainly, it's acceptable, right? But with, with, with a lot of different things, there's conflicts. So if you have entrepreneurs that's coming in and investing in different, uh, short-term rentals, there can be conflicts with people that own houses. And so, so what I want to do is talk about some of those conflicts for a moment. And so, go ahead. So once the number of occupants, and so, we've already heard a lot of comments about that. And so, the number of occupants is a two-sided thing. So, investors would like to get as many people in that home as they could, because that, that increases the rent. So, so there's some beds, okay? So, so you can say, I have beds everywhere. And so, so this, so I get a lot of people. As far as the renters, they would say, okay, so limit the beds, a limit of people, but I'm hoping some friends come too, and we can all share in each space, right? Parking is another thing. So the more people you have, the more cars, so everybody show up. So, um, so, this is an example, and, uh, there's three beds and bed, and a foosball table in the middle. So if you look, if you look online, there's a lot of sofas, there's a lot of hot beds, there's a lot of notable beds and bedrooms, there's a lot of uses to try to get the number of occupants out. Okay, Dan, next? When you get more people, you get more cars. So this is generic, this is a typical occurrence of cars in Blue Cup. So you hear people complaining in Blue Cup? That's what it looks like, and could be every day. Another? So, so, um, so another home? And so, if you say this is just a few people that stay, it's not, it's a lot of people, because you met a lot of cars. Uh, and so, short-term rentals, they're there, so, so we don't know how many there are. You don't know. Um, I'd say there's lots, okay? They range in prices, a thousand dollars a night. So, so with all those people coming in every day, with all those cars parked all over the place, that really kind of diminishes that, that American dream. Kind of puts a little dust on that house that you owned and your family owns, because there's even more conflicts. A lot of these people are families that are good, law-abiding citizens, that are just there to enjoy the nature. There's a lot of people that are that way. I've rented a door in Georgia, and it's, it's a lot of fun. Way out of the woods. But there's a lot of people that come to Dan Allen, it's party time. It's party time. I can get a case of beer and my friends, and take that three or four hundred dollars and divide it up, it's a pretty cheap party. Get some hot dogs, we're good together. And so, with the alcohol and the marijuana flowing over your head, the noise, as people have said, is all day long. And then, of course, a lot of regulars for short-term rentals, they have a fire pit or a hot tub, which makes the party come outside, and it goes all night long. It's not just drugs and noise, it's that language. And it's continuous. So think about it. Your little grandparents, they're running around on the yard, and then two, three-year-olds, they repeat everything they hear. And so they start, why, why where did that word come from? Those are neighbors. And you're taking on your dock, because it's just trash. And speaking of trash, these people come in annoyingly, they give you foul trash. And they don't understand the rules that we have in the river. So they, they dump up the river, and like people mentioned, they bring pets. And I have little Yorkies, I don't have big dogs, and mine are on a leash, and they look like something to some of these victims. Go ahead. So that's really what's at it, and that's really the American dream. You save dog life, the law wants to retire them, and this is, this is what we're saving for. Our whole lives is a place in Dan Allen. We really love it, but it really puts a cloud on it, when you got to hear all this nasty language, noise all night long. Um, and that's not everybody, but it is a pain to repeat, and that's what people are telling, that it just really is too much, okay? So, so other conflicts are guests being promoted with their surroundings. So what is that? Well, I had about twelve-thirty in the morning, my front door rattle. My wife says, hey, what is that? So I go outside, and I see backing out on Broadway, a car with no lights on, and they leave. The next morning, there's ten or eleven cars next door, and that shit, that car was next door. The people were showing up for a party, and they weren't familiar with the place.
They just go down the hall, that's a new situation sometimes.
Yep. But it's not just that. They don't know about the river. So they think, oh, those cute little alligators, they're about three foot long, oh, let's throw them some, some food, right? So when they leave, now those gators lose their fear of humans, and now they're definitely starting to come over, and they're all singing my praises. But it's not just that. Think about, think about those people saying, you know your home, you know where we're at, you know your home, you close your eyes and walk all around. But you take a, a family home, residential home, that's designed for a small family, and you can sit at fifteen, twenty people in that house, and you got, yeah, it's all the lights, people sleeping on the floor. But what if something happens? What if something happens? You got people all piled in the room, most houses won't necessarily have smoke detectors, carbon monoxide monitors, I doubt seriously they got a lit sign that says this is where the exit is. Those are all required in a hotel room. In a hotel, you show up with twenty people for a hotel room? And they say, get out of here. So there's a high potential for something to happen in the house, where you end up with a pile of lights, because people can't find their way out, they're not familiar with it. You got people piled all over the place. So with all these issues, and somebody said it properly, this is not my job to, to call the police about my mortgage. And guess what? You know, in residential neighborhoods, we don't do that. We're used to like, talking to our neighbors and working stuff out. We don't call the police all the time on our mortgage, but it's yours, here, baby. And if you call the police, most of the time, the owner is in the, the main, the republic, or in California. No, you go call. So it's just the continuous nature of living next door to some vacation rentals. Not all, but there's a lot of them in Dan Allen, gotta load up the parking lots every day or every weekend. And so that continuous nature of that starts another cycle, which is, people say, I'm tired of this. I'm tired of it, it's growing rapidly, so what do they do? They sell. And guess what? They get a big price. We're getting people buying from California sight unseen, I'll take it. And they turn it into a short-term rental, which increases that. And so that makes Dan Allen start looking like a destination, not a city, which means, hey, you don't need a Little League, you don't need a Little League field, you don't need a church, they're just here for the weekend, everybody, right? And so, so it changes the whole nature of the city. So what can we do about it? Well, short-term rentals, the governor, this is a hot thing, it's a hot topic with all cities, and right now, they talk about it every year, and the, and the, and the legislature said, you can't stop vacation rentals, you can't limit the frequency, but you can regulate them. So, so what do I know about it? Well, I'm lucky. I've been part of a team of citizens in Dan Allen for over a year, and we've been working on short-term rentals, and we hired a legal team to help us. So in the nuclear industry that I'm familiar with, we never reinvented the wheel. So we asked our legal team to tell us the twenty-four best cities in Florida that have ordinances for, for vacation rentals. Give us what they think are the best short-term rental ordinances, and so we provide that to the staff, and we even provide a recommendation of what our ordinance could be like. And here's some of the, here's some of the attributes that it contains. So, so, so let me just, before I get into that, let me just say there's one more item that really takes away from the American dream of all this kind of stuff, and that is having people come every day, that's new people that you don't know. That's new people that you don't know. And so this is the biggest item. Because sexual predators have to be registered and notified for all the neighbors. You know who they are, right? But with short-term rentals, you don't know these people from Adam. Not at all. Which means they could be lurking in the bushes when your grandkids are playing out in the yard. And that makes your, your dream, your American dream disappear. Some kind of event like that makes your whole life investment, your whole life turn upside down. So regulations are necessary. And like I say, we've looked at, there's, there's tons of ordinances in Florida. Okay? So we picked out some of the best. And let me just kind of show you some of the items that, that cover. The solution is regulations that balance property rights. So the owners of vacation rentals, they got rights. So do the people living next door. It has to be balanced. I think somebody with a lot of intelligence told me that if there was a cone that was put over the vacation rental and nobody noticed it, it's fine. But it's when all that runs over into your property that there needs to be some kind of a balance with regulations. And so first of all, almost all cities require registration. So you know who they are, where they are. And it's listed online. So you can look it up and see, yep, that's a vacation rental. And with that, you establish a dedicated responsible party. And that's a person that either owner or the owner designated to be responsible for that rental. And so that person has the phone number on the website of who to call. And they have to be able to respond within normally an hour if there's a complaint or a problem. So the next thing is ordinances define roles and responsibilities. What's the role and responsibility of the owner, the, the people that rent, and the city? And, and so they establish limits. How many people can be there? It's normally two people per bedroom. And a bedroom is clearly defined. It's a room outside that has a window to the outside for rescue. And it defines what it's not. It's not the kitchen. It's not the living room. It's not a bathroom. It's not a hallway. And so it limits how many people you have based on the design of the house. And so, so with those limits, it also establishes limits of parking. So you only get parking cars based on how many people are allowed. And then you have inspections by the city. And then you have enforcement. So those are the common elements that we see in all of the ordinances that we provided to the staff. And I think with that balanced solution, the people that have short-term rentals may also appreciate it. Because the people that aren't doing a lot of these things, it makes them all in compliance. And, and if it's just a person on something, he says, "I just want to make a few bucks," they may not really be wanting to go through this kind of thing. It puts everybody on an equal playing field. Thank you very much for your time. And, uh, and our team is available to answer any questions on the ordinances that we provide. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Hand, thank you very much. Uh, Mr. Hand, you are currently reviewing some of these cities and are going to come up with these suggestions. Uh, there, there is great interest in looking into this seriously. So the question is, how do we go from where we're at right now to where we want to be?
Sure, I could address it in just a few minutes now or I could address it during attorney comments. But I could, I could tell you what you need to know. Uh, sure. Uh, what Mr. Porter said is, is accurate all around. And as I understand it, um, correct me if I'm wrong, so we're part of a task team looking at, um, in, in particular, uh, ordinance within the neighborhood to, to slow things down. Uh, so looking at ordinances is, is part of that research. It makes sense. Um, with that history, everything has been, you know, everything got shaken up and turned upside down in 2011. 2014, things changed a bit. Uh, over the years, we talked a little bit about banning and have answered questions as to, no, you can't ban. You can do registration. So that's been a topic of, of discussion. And one of the, the ordinance that just came before planning is based on how your county's ordinance, uh, which is actually, turns out, I can see a collateral, but one of the ordinance that, um, that Mr. Porter provided. And that ordinance in particular is an ordinance that, that seemed to work well with Dunhill and consulting with the staff. And that, um, it doesn't deal with inspections personally, but hits the most, what I think are the most important ones. Registration, uh, providing information regarding the city's ordinance when it comes to sound, garbage, noise, parking. Uh, also requiring maintenance in line with city ordinance of Florida building code. Naming these things, they, it's already required by state law. But you see that's an important part of these ordinance. Having that responsible party that Mr. Porter mentioned. And, um, another provision requiring maintenance in the property code. So if there's a violation, that's a separate violation in addition to property violations. When, there was, there was some feedback from the Planning Commission. I think that it made clear to me that, uh, there's some interest in the city in going further. Particularly when it comes to parking. Since then, I've seen some photos of the parking. Not the photo that I saw tonight, but some other photos, which is problem, obviously a problem. And, uh, with definitions for bedrooms and that sort of thing. Some of the other things cities can do, uh, logs, keeping logs of, of visitors, some of those safety requirements, um, requiring information about registrations on advertisements. Uh, and, uh, ensuring that some of those responsible parties have certain proximity and availability. So these are some things that, that can be done. And in a revised ordinance, I think some of the things that focus on are, in particular, the parking and some bedroom limitations to occupancy. Uh, but, um...
So this is, this is right now in, in planning?
Uh, the, the ordinance prior to was reviewed by planning. Uh, but, but since then, actually, as you're aware, I spoke to Mr. Porter and also heard some feedback from planning that they want to go a little bit further. And the last time that I spoke to you, uh, the council made a report that we are looking at going beyond as far as regulations, you know, beyond what was originally presented to accommodate some of these concerns. Or accommodate's the wrong word, but to alleviate some of the concerns.
So my question, Andy, or maybe to Mr. Hand, is there seems to be a keen interest in addressing this. My sense is that council would be willing to look into this. So what is the process by which we go from where we're at to where it starts to firm up where council has an idea to, what you're, what you're putting together? Is this now in staff's hands to start putting something together?
Well, once there is a final draft based on what Mr. Porter provided us, um, it'll go to planning first. And it'll go through the planning commission for recommendation to city council. And then, then you all will have it in your hands to do what you want to do with it.
Do these usually require public hearings?
Well, it's, it's going to be part of the land development code. So, so absolutely.
So have two public hearings?
Well, it'll have a first and second reading with council. As a very, at a minimum, council may wish to, to work on it a bit. I mean, it could come to council first. But I think, uh, you know, what, what options are out there and what can go in these ordinances is, is very clear. And I've been working on them for a number of years. Depending on prior to 2011. And now it's a very hot topic, like Mr. Porter said. And every year, the chapter legislature puts forth a bill to again revoke that government ability to regulate them. But it hasn't passed yet.
The question that I asked about, uh, of a hearings is very important. Where both sides of the equation have their opportunity to speak. Whether you are someone that owns a home that they're currently renting out and you want to make sure you're protected with this ordinance. Or those that are the neighborhood, as Mr. Porter described, that feel that your property is being, toes of your property is being stepped on. So it sounds like the process will allow everybody that has an interest in this to, to participate, which is a good thing.
What I would say is registration is the absolute key. But beyond registration, and, and the reason that, um, I don't think it's a fairytale ordinance, the ordinance the planning received would address a lot of the problems in Dunhill. You know, part, it's not a part of it. Uh, but to really... Fix the problem, inspection's a big part of it. And in conversing with staff, Dunhill doesn't have that capability right now. But the ordinance can be written not to require the inspection, but to say the city may require the inspection. And then all of the, uh, you know, all the regulations can be on the books. And the city has the ability to inspect or if it becomes such an issue that it's priority to put someone in inspection on there. When these come up every year, it can be part of it. Regardless, it can be part of the rules. I remember somebody said something about, um, a video or something that is as far as educating, people love the river. But, uh, one of the things that can be required as well is, is informational, you know, an information packet that goes to these visitors. I guarantee they'll read it. But, um, at least they'll have access to that. And they'll know that it's illegal to feed flora and wildlife, illegal to feed alligators. And then citations to those state statutes can be included.
Okay. What's interesting about this, it really gives everybody an opportunity to really be part of this. Because it's going to have to go through the planning commission first. It's going to be discussed there, whatever. So that gives you an opportunity. It's in the developmental stage to be at the, uh, planning commission meetings and to speak and to listen. Once it comes out of the planning commission and it comes to us, it'll be at least two opportunities again to speak. So, uh, everybody that has an interest in this, uh, will have great opportunity to participate and be part of the process. Correct?
And do you know if this will be ready? If the draft will be ready for the planning meeting on the 21st? Our next planning commission meeting's on the 21st?
Not, not for this month, but for next month would not be a problem at all.
Funny, I was just looking on Airbnb last night for a house down in Clearwater next weekend.
Uh, yeah. Most, just, uh, as far as timing and so forth, this ordinance, I would anticipate that it would coincide effective date coincide with this year. So whatever is ultimately approved by council, recommendation would be started on the 1st. Because everything is going to be tagged with registration. So it makes sense. Um, so it's obviously, I, with the importance of, of the topic, we'd still be looking at October effective date, but it would be in, in, it's long, long prior to October.
Thank you very much. Okay, are we, uh, are we finished with all those reports? I think we are. All right. We're now moving on to number seven. Item number seven, agreement 2022-15. As of our audit services, I believe, this is Jan Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, you always have to discuss with finding revenues. And this is one way to have an opportunity to have audits on all the excise taxes that the city is entitled to, such as pricing, communication service taxes, uh, sales tax, things of that nature, to ensure that we are receiving everything we are legally available to. A couple of years ago, the finance firm conducted an audit of propane distributors. Arisco was very limited because when we did a search on distributors doing business within, um, the Dunhill area, it also kind of led over into the unincorporated area of Dunhill. And we're not entitled to those, to those revenues. This audit firm specializes in, um, ensuring receipt of all revenues. They look at the property tax, um, uh, roll. They look at anything that's available to them from the state. They have a team of auditors that can pursue this for us. Now, this would be done at no, no direct cost to the city initially. Excuse me. Unless they find revenues that have gone uncollected for several years. For example, our propane would go back five years in audit form. They can do that as well. They would be following our orders. Their fees would be, if they discover uncollected revenues, their fee would be 45% of those revenues on receipt. And if they discover any, um, new revenue sources, such as a propane distributor that we're not aware of, they would be entitled to 45% of that revenue over 36 months. So this is, this would be revenue that we never received to begin with. So there wouldn't be a budget impact, a negative budget impact. And anything they discover is more revenue that's going to come our way for a positive budget, budget impact. So, um, staff is recommending, um, to get into this agreement, allow them to do a full audit and see what we may be missing on these issues. Because we internally do not have the resources.
Sort of like digging, digging for, uh, lost gold, right? Money that is out there, we don't know where it is. They find it and...
And I will give you an example. The state does do an audit of communication service taxes every year. And typically, we're receiving a couple hundred or two thousand dollars extra. So when you're, um, cell phone bill, the taxes aren't being reported correctly from your provider. And the state does an audit of that, an audit of the address. And remits to us what your legal heroes to accept.
So the one, the one question I would have, is this service in other areas of cities that, that, like, for instance, who else does this?
Um, I did not pursue that. They are a nationally known company. I did not ask for references. I can come back with...
I think that would be real important, you know, especially within a 50 to 100 mile area here, you know? Or, you know, that gives a verification that it's in place. We know where it's in place and we know it's working.
Well, I didn't ask for, uh, references because this is no cost to the city. This is no cost to us upfront. If they collect nothing, if they discover nothing, we're not out of anything. So that's why I didn't think to, to consider asking for a reference.
If a guy's going to paint my house for free, I'm going to still ask him for a reference.
But I can go ahead and certainly do that. And I'll have some information hopefully on Monday for you.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments?
It's not, it's actually something that other people have said enough.
All right, so, Mandy, you'll put this on the agenda when you're ready to report, correct? All right, if there's no further comments by council, we will move to number eight, agreement 2022-20, Duke Energy Electric Vehicle Fast Charging Site. Uh, I believe this would be Troy. Get your, get the microphone, Troy.
All right. Council, we had talked a couple of months ago about the EV charging site through Duke Energy. I think now we are at the phase, and Mandy, please, uh, keep up with this because I think we've been doing most of the communications there, that we are ready to move forward with this with execution of the whole site agreements. As we were notified by Dorothy Purdue back in October of 2021, Duke Energy had the new EV charging station project. We followed through, uh, did a follow-up February and in March. We met with Duke representatives, identified two locations within the city. Uh, the locations are still the same as we talked before. It's Datesman Park, which is the overflow parking for City Hall, and Ernie Mills Park located on Bostick Street. During the 10-year contract term, Duke Energy shall install, maintain, repair all equipment and infrastructure at their expense upon expiration of the agreement, including any extensions thereof. And at Duke, Duke Energy's and the city's mutual decision, title to the equipment may transfer to the city at reasonable book or market value. Duke Energy shall be responsible for the installation of the system by which to charge all electrical, um, charge for all electrical consumption cost derived from the utilization of the charging stations. of the charging stations for charging the electrical vehicles. During the term, the city will not be billed for the electricity. Duke Energy will provide electricity to the customer during the 10-year term free of charge. At the end of that term, the city will be billed for the electricity with the option to recover the cost by charging the customer for the consumption cost. In the event of early termination of the agreement by the city pursuant to the section 3C, the city shall pay Duke Energy on the termination date an amount equal to the termination fee calculated by Duke Energy, equal the pro-rata portion of the depreciated dollar value of the equipment and infrastructure attributed to the portions of terms not completed. So right now, I also read in the contract that if we ever go with these agreements and we have it on a piece of property that later sells, we have the option of transferring that thing to the government. Just for future efforts on that. I don't think we'll ever sell Ernie Mills Park or the overflow parking lot. But it is our recommendation that we sign the agreement and get moving forward with the project.
Mr. Hand, have you reviewed this?
I haven't.
You're okay with it?
I am.
All right, what do we need to do? Any comments?
No, because this will be great. This will, I mean, I know we don't want too much tourism apparently, but this will bring people to our city because they do those little apps to find out where the nearest charging station is. And that would be, this is just, it's just a way to... Mr. Hand, question, would we need an ordinance? I know they said 10 years from now, but would we need to go ahead and eventually put in a new ordinance or something stating that we can charge in a public parking, you know? You know what I'm saying?
Going, I remember you already have a structure that allows for, for paid parking. Now, whether that works with this type of model and so forth, you know, that may require some tweaks, but it's already been authorized, as I recall. Remind you?
So for those that aren't familiar with this, this is to create, this Dunellen kind of began being on the forefront. Kind of unusual when you start describing Dunellen being on the forefront, but we're putting a charging station. One, one would be over by Ernie Mills, by Public Works, and the other one would be at the...
No, the airport by parking.
Datesman Park, right over here at Datesman in Ohio, right by Rust, the overflow...
It's our overflow parking lot area.
And it will be on the street side parking, not the boat and trailer parking.
If council does approve this, how long would it be before Duke Energy would have it in place?
When we initiated this, the first individual I met with in the field from Duke Energy said six to nine months to receive the equipment. They were placing the order for the equipment to be in days of that need. However, that individual has since retired, resigned, gone. The project has been turned over to a new individual who promises to carry out our agreement totally agreeable, has a pick, and will be meeting with me. But to my understanding, the equipment has been ordered. They have, they had a target number of sites to hit throughout a certain area. So the equipment has been ordered. I'm hoping that we can see this completed within six to nine months. There'll be two, right. Two parking spots at Datesman Park and two parking spots at...
Two at both.
Yes, ma'am. Two at both.
It's one, it's one unit, but two charging ports, only each unit.
Okay, okay. Now, also, just for the council's knowledge and the public's knowledge, because of all the construction that we did in Ernie Mills Park, the red brick park and the nice sidewalks and all that stuff, I made sure that Duke Energy is responsible for the store and any and all grounds disturbed during the installation of the structure. So that includes asphalt, brick door, concrete door, grass.
What does council need to do in this sort of note? Put this on the agenda?
We need to put weekends scheduled on the Monday agenda for, to authorize the mayor to execute the agreement. Whether or not we can plan on consent or regular...
I would recommend we put it on consent. We can just pull it if someone has an issue. Put it on consent. Thank you very much. That's exciting news, Troy, and I know you've been on the forefront of making this happen.
Let's not, let's not forget, Councilwoman Jane Cabbage is first to bring that...
Was she? Okay, that's right. Jan, if you're listening, thank you. All right. Item number nine, moving along. Agreement 2020-14 Cooperative Agreement, CDBG Home Investment Partnership Program. Who describes that one to us?
I do, Mr. Mayor. This is an agreement that we entered into with Marion County back in 2020 to see if we could obtain CDBG funding for projects. I initially contacted them for when the police department was at Souls Harbor and Hart was going to be for a community building, community center. Because CDBG is community-driven, it's not for city facilities. And I was told that they could most likely help with the parking lot, but not the building itself because the building itself was a city facility. So our agreement is expiring. It is set to auto-renew, and Marion County is asking us to have the mayor execute a letter stating our intent, our interest in staying with the project. Now that Luron Park restrooms have really kind of been firmed up and we've committed to finding $175,000, that may be one opportunity for us to find some grant funding. So because we initially thought, no, we need to get out of this because we can go at stake, request CDBG funding. But that also puts us in the pot with a lot more players for a small pot of dollars. So this way, we're only in competition with Bellemont, McIntosh, Reddick, those communities within Marion County. So staff is recommending that we re-up for another couple of years at least and see if we can at least obtain some funding for Lurin Park and maybe even some playground equipment. CDBG has very strict rules on what they fund and the citizenry that benefits. It's funded by HUD, so it's below the moderate income basis. And that's what we have to prove. Typically, they use the census trap. So we, we've been able to obtain quite a bit of CDBG funding, but maybe not as much as we would like to because of our income ranges within Dunellen. Lurin Park might be a very good candidate.
Okay, so this is a continuation of an agreement that's been in place for a while?
Yes, for a couple of years.
Okay. Any comments from council?
Mr. Hand, anything? They put it on the consent agenda?
Yeah. Sodium consent agenda. Thank you, Ms. Smith. All right. We leave number nine on the agenda. Now we're at number 10, agreement 2022-13, a tri-party agreement between MCB, zero, I mean OCC, City of Dunellen, Little League for improvements at the Little League. Who is...
Yes, sir. As a result of Mr. Gissy making the contribution to the county for the improvements at the Little League field and the county's, their additional $50,000 match, $50,000 available improvement, the county presented us with a tri-party agreement between the county, the city, and the Dunellen Little League. This agreement has been reviewed by both county attorney, our city attorney. It's passed back and forth between them a few times. And we have determined that this is not something that we have to send up to the state for approval. So as soon as we sign this agreement, it'll be presented to the board of county commissioners for approval and then passed to Dunellen Little League for their approval.
So that's when they will receive their $100,000?
That's when they'll be able to begin working on the fields.
This is something council that has been discussed, we're very well aware of it. Any further discussion on this?
This is individual. Yes. Now get out of the door.
That's some good news. County came up with $50,000. Two individuals came up, I believe, with $25,000 apiece. And so our Little League is going to be the recipient of $100,000. That's amazing. Don't forget that the city itself contributed $15,000 out of our budget about six months ago. Okay, very good, council. We'll go to number 11, agreement 2022-21. I work. Is that what it is? Community development management software. Is this yours?
And I will be presenting that.
Okay.
And this has been an effort to improve the city's daily operations with regards to community development. So I am presenting a web-based management software to be implemented for permitting, planning, zoning, and code enforcement, so that it can track the activities on a daily basis. The system will significantly improve functionality efficiency of the community development department and its responsibilities while providing an increased level of customer support. So if any more... So basically, we have a, we have a need within community development to, to have a system in place that will, that will allow citizens and contractors to come in and do, and do everything online so that it's easier for everybody to, to do the daily operations of our, of our department. Right now, we have Tyler Munis. It's currently the provider that we use for our daily activities. And this system is not user-friendly at all. It leaves room for errors as everything has to be inputted manually, resulting in paper-based workflow that creates a lot of work on our staff. For permitting, the system does not allow residents and contractors to pay bills online, submit permits, view permit status, or make changes as needed. The average time for processing the simplest type of permits is about 20 minutes for our staff, 15 minutes for a building inspector to just review a plan. Additional staff time takes about four hours per week to spend on scheduling inspections, printing inspection sheets, entering the inspection results, and emailing the contractor or owner with the results. So this is an ongoing thing that takes, takes a toll on our staff. This does not include time spent answering numerous questions each day regarding permit statuses. This leaves little or no time to respond to zoning inquiries, work on code updates, or other administrative tasks that have been assigned to the department. So for, for example, for code enforcement, there is, there is a module within Tyler Munis, but it's not being, it's not being used right now. It's never been implemented. So to track violations, staff has to do everything manually. We have an Excel file, and that's how we keep the violations and that's how we, that's how we control what, what violations we have and how we monitor these. And it takes a really long time because we have to interface with our GIS mapping, our property appraisers office. It's, it's just not user-friendly. Community development has two and a half-person staff pretty much because we have, it's, it's our planning assistant, myself, and our code enforcement officer who works part-time. So it is imperative we implement a better system to keep with the demands of community development. And the new system will also allow the department to function efficiently when an employee is out rather than having to, the progress of permitting or planning or zoning or code enforcement because we don't have enough power to manually input the permits and so forth. So in, in trying to look for the best option, I've gone out and contacted other cities that have something like this in place. Many cities are already taking advantage of this system. And, and I'm about to present the, the different quotes that I've, that I've been able to get within our purchasing policy. As you know, we have to get three quotes. So I went out and got a quote from Iwork Q, cloud permit, and then of course Tyler Munis is the one that we currently have. And so with that said, Tyler Munis, as I mentioned, is a paper-based system that does not currently offer interfacing with GIS maps or external users. There is not a module available for code enforcement, and the software requires specialized hardware to be purchased separately for scanning documents into, into system. The current scanner cost was $800, as you know, and we had to acquire it because no other scanner would be compatible with the system. The city currently pays $2,877, which is $0.56 per year, just for the permitting module. And, and this is just for support hosting. So it's not, that's not including training, that's not including anything else that goes with the Tyler Munis software, I'm sorry, program. And so it still requires permits to be manually entered by staff who need to be trained, like I said. So if we get a new hire, we have to pay for training for that new hire. Council recently approved $6,520 to pay for training for new hires, of which 1,304 have already been used towards this training. Unfortunately, it was used on someone that's no longer with the city. So we basically lost the $1,304 because now we have to train new hires again. This was just for eight hours of training, which accounted to $1,304 because they charge $163 per hour. I have been trying to schedule the remainder of the training sessions, but it's just, it's been humanly impossible because they don't have, they don't have training, they don't have someone available to train. So I've been just waiting to see when they have somebody that can train our staff. Lastly, with this module, we have no code enforcement in place right now, like I said before. And to implement it, we would need to pay thousands of dollars more because the implementation is going, they're going to charge us to, to implement what we need to implement for code enforcement. Tyler Munis advised us that there will be an upgrade to a fully web-based version by February 23, which is optional, but explained that there will be an implementation fee of about $175 per hour. They think it's going to take about 4,200 hours. So with that said, I think it's completely useless. And so that is what is triggering me to look at other options. So my next option that I, that I researched was cloud permit. Cloud permit has a fully functional, simple, and smart web-based software to assist local communities with community development needs. They have helped about 500 local government building departments in the U.S. alone. Applicants developer, developers and staff all can remote in and access the permits, making it very easy for everybody. Cloud permit allows... Cloud Permit allows you to submit, track, and pay for permits online, request and schedule building inspections, conduct onsite mobile building inspections, review, approve, and issue building permits online, use software that has regular feature updates set up within weeks, not months, so that their setup is within four to seven weeks and will be fully live. Their integration can be done from a staff point, so we don't need to get an IT person to do this for us, which will limit the amount of the cost that will be incurred in that. It interacts with our mapping system, our GIS mapping system, and gains insight with reporting and managed planning approval processes online and streamlined development processes. It can be used 24/7 because it's a web-based program. It can track online complaint submission, track and manage code enforcement activity and violations, and communicate with involved parties, and proactively create cases in the field all online. So if we have, for example, a code enforcement officer in the field, and they are putting together a file, they don't have to come in the office and do it on the computer. They can do it from their iPad, their phone, and it's all online. Not only that, but it can create, it creates the file, the case file, for that violation, and it also creates a monitoring system so that whoever the code enforcement is, and you know, whatever they input, it's going to remind them, let's say it's a courtesy notice that it needs to be looked at in 30 days. That code enforcement officer is going to get a text or an email saying 30 days to follow up on that, so that nothing gets dropped or overseen. They send an initial quote of $10,000 annual cost for it with a one-time implementation fee of $1,000, meaning that the first year would be $11,000. And then the year after that, and every year after that, would be $10,000 for the program. But they called me right before the meeting and advised me that they were willing to negotiate the price. So they lowered it down to $5,000 with a $1,000 implementation fee. And that includes training. Like I said, it includes support, training, everything. So if we, let's say we lose our assistant and a new person comes in, God forbid, the training is part of the annual fee. So we don't have to pay any additional fees. The third company I researched is Iwork. Iwork is also a cloud-based software company. So they provide, their entire system is online, just the same as a Cloud Permit. The difference is that they quoted us at $5,500 annual with an implementation fee of $3,500. Iwork is currently used by Inverness, City of Inverness. They had Munis, and they hated it. And they actually told me to quote them on my presentation as, you know, saying Munis sucks. I just wanted to make sure I put it out there. And they are very happy with Iwork. They endorsed the company to us and said that they can help us with the implementation process if need be. So that was initially, when I started doing the presentation, my recommendation would have been Iwork as the one company that I would ask for approval, because I received this updated quote from Cloud Permit, and they sent in an agreement as well. It's going to be in the process of reviewing, and I've asked our city attorney to review the agreement to see that it's legally sufficient for you all to approve, and then it will come to your attention, hopefully on Monday, for approval. With that said... So in trying to get the best value for our budget, we are moving forward to trying to get a smart, web-based, user-friendly, online software. This is going to provide, like I said, 80% faster processing because we're not, we're moving from paper-based systems. It covers all four sections of our department. It can receive online payments, which right now we don't have that capability. It can do the tracking, the alerts, onsite inspections made easier, all this information that is here, along with support and training, which is absolutely incredible. And it's a lot more cost-efficient, as I mentioned before. Next. And then I did a little breakdown for you so that it would be easier for you to kind of visualize where we are at. Tyler Munis, we have paid so far an aggregate of $4,981 per year in between training and what we pay for the year. And aside from that, there's another $5,216 that we would have to pay for training if we were to keep this system. That's for one year. It goes way beyond what I'm trying to accomplish. If we were to get the upgrade, it would be so inefficient and costly.
So really, what counsel's dying to hear from you is what you're recommending?
My recommendation is that we go with a web-based program.
We got it. Where do you want to go?
My recommendation is that we go with a web-based program that is going to alleviate all these issues, and we're going to end up paying a lot less at the end.
So can you come back on Monday? After looking at both of them and attorney looking at their, and then giving us a recommendation on Monday? That way we can vote on it on Monday?
Ready to go, yeah.
That's where...
Because you have new information now, so give it us some...
Absolutely, and that's what I'm trying to push for, so that we can get. And just so you know, if we do go with this type of program, that's going to give us a lot more time to focus on things like code revisions, which are so much needed, and other things.
And Mandy, Ms. Oden, you'll also really be wireless too.
Yes, sir. Like Georgina said, the amended quote from Cloud Permit just came in today, which changed her initial recommendation. And that's already been forwarded to Andrew for review. So if he can get something, if we can get that all wrapped up, we can actually probably get it out to you prior to Monday. But definitely by Monday for your review before it helps.
Well, put it on the agenda.
And budget-wise, just so you know, Cloud, I mean, Iwork suggested that if need be, we didn't have to pay for the first invoice on this year's budget, but it can be, they can send us an invoice for a cover first so that it would go on next year's budget, and we can account to that. And I will bring that up to Cloud Permit, make sure that we can have that capability with them as well. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
I have a question.
Sure.
You did say that the Iworks was being used by Inverness, and they were happy with the program?
Yes.
But you didn't mention who is using Cloud Permit? What are the other cities?
Cloud Permit has about 500 other cities that they work with already, but locally, they don't have anybody right now. The closest one would be Forts Amulsee County.
Marion County must have something in terms of their types of programs that are, you know, that they're using. Do you know what they're using?
I'm not aware of what Marion County is using right now. I think they...
And they do a lot of in-house IT and those types of things too. All theirs, a lot, and it's always having headaches from some of the building inspectors that I hear from.
Just something I would ask. I'd be interested if you could find, like I heard that we're within our general area that we're used to dealing with. That would be helpful.
Right. Cloud Permit is one of the leading companies, from what I saw. They are not big in Florida, but they are big in the U.S. as a whole. Iwork has other cities around us that they work with. And again, we got the testimonial from Inverness about their work and support staff and everything, but that's...
Okay, Ms. Sed. All right, we got it.
Awesome.
We got it. All right. And we'll be on the agenda. Now we move to number 12. Bid 2022-02 Mockingbird Drive and West Blue Cove Drive, roadway project. Award recommendation, I imagine this would be Troy.
Yes. Again, counsel, thank you. This is for the road project for the Blue Cove area, where we are repaving the majority section of Mockingbird, the three intersections, and the short section of, it's actually, yeah, West Blue Cove Drive. Okay? On March 14, 2022, city council authorized the staff to solicit bids for the above-referenced project. Bids were received and opened on May 4, 2022. We'd only received two bids. Artwork of Construction, $249,942. VE Whitehurst and Sun Incorporated, $176,380. It is expected that the Ohio Street, expected that the Ohio Street and Cedar Street paving project will be completed under budget by an approximate $111,572. What I should do is step back just a second here. We received two bids on the project. We have $150,000 currently in the budget for that project. The total cost for the project is coming in at $209,000. So that's why the explanation of the Cedar Street, Ohio Street has $111,000 in contingency pot because it came in under bid and is expected to complete way under the budget cost. So with engineering, with the lowest bid, the total project is coming in at $209,980, requiring us to use about $59,000, $60,000 of the Cedar Street, Ohio Street contingency. So it is in the budget for both projects to be completed under total budget for the year. So it is our request and recommendation with the current market and the way it is, the cost of contracts and materials continuously rising, that if we want to get this project done, requesting that counsel authorize us to move forward and complete this project.
Whitehurst?
Pardon me?
Did you want to go with Whitehurst?
VE Whitehurst and Sun. Yes.
Well, counsel, I remember very clearly when, during the budgeting sessions, when this was brought up to do these and add that to the budget, which it originally was not in. And we were told, and I realized it's a moving target, that it would cost approximately $120,000. So counsel, knowing that prices could go up, allocated $150,000. So we put a extra 20% to it. And now the price is coming up at $209,000. So we were originally thinking it was $120,000. We came up with $150,000, and now the estimate is $209,000.
However, counsel, I would be remiss if I didn't take some of the blame for that because we did increase the original scope of work. Originally, we were only talking about redoing the intersections themselves, but then realized that we would be destroying the integrity of Mockingbird and would end up faced with change orders or potentially causing more damage to the roadway if not doing them all at once. So we did increase the scope of work from the original rough estimate of $120,000, $150,000. So, and of course...
And the engineering, here's the part that already hits me. This is a relatively small building project. And the, add the $209,000, how much of that is an engineering fee?
$33,600.
$33,000. Yeah, okay. All right, counsel, comments?
The Blue Cove will look beautiful. Everybody will be happy.
Well, I think the question everybody would beg to ask is, what softens the blow on this extra money is your anticipation that we will have a cost savings on the Cedar Street project. How would you explain it to counsel if we don't have a cost savings? If that turns out to be...
Right now, we do have a cost savings on Cedar Street. It came in under bid. Under what we had in the budget, like $111,000. We have one change order pending for that project. Added in a couple of driveway aprons and the complete intersection of Chestnut and Ohio Street. And that change order is estimated at $6,000. So, and there's nothing that should or could, in my opinion, create major change orders. We're not doing water, sewer. We're not digging into the ground, finding unanticipated, you know, surprises. This is literally a road reclamation project. When they go in, they build up the surface that is there, grind it right back into the limestone base that is there, regrade, compact, and move forward. The only thing challenging about the Ohio Street and Cedar Street project was the fact that water lines and sewer lines were found to be in the way, were too shallow of depth, were already leaking. So that set us back a little bit, but it has not cost us an extra dime on the contract yet. And the only other potential issues we might have is where we've added the on-street arcing behind City Hall here over by Annie Johnson and, you know, certain locations. So as they get to the offside of the pre-existing road, we may run into small issues. Certainly don't expect $60,000 plus in change orders.
All right, so you're requesting counsel follow your recommendation of accepting the bid that equals $209,000 total, correct?
The project, yes, but the bid for $100,000, is the number up there, man?
The motion on the agenda would be to award the bid to VE Whitehurst and Sun and authorize the mayor to sign the contract documents.
Yes. Award the bid to VE Whitehurst.
VE Whitehurst in the amount of $176,380.
Any further discussion?
I don't know enough about it to discuss. I do accept that you do, and I would...
So let me add to that to help just a little bit. We, you know, one of our biggest challenges is we take rough guess estimates when we put our budgets together, but I have never had to deal with such a fluctuating market. Cost of concrete has gone up 40-something percent per cubic yard. Asphalt has also increased, you know, exponentially, 40%, 50% of what it was just two years ago. So I'm afraid by hesitating or pausing on this, if we turn down both bids and wait, could the price come back down in a couple of years? Yes. Could it go up? Yes. And in the meantime, we've already proven the severity and the need of these intersections and segments of roadway, okay? Based on the report that will be given to counsel in July on road assessment by the engineering grant that we have to do, road assessment and evaluation... the road assessment and evaluations and stuff like that, you'll see that these are hotspots on that evaluation process. So it is my recommendation that we move forward to, yes.
Since we're talking about roads and let's just, you know, as far as I'm concerned, I would go with your recommendation. But the fact that we did not get approval, the grants that we wanted for Danellon Heights, which was a big disappointment to us, would it not be appropriate to put some kind of declaration in our capital improvement element that would at least indicate that we are looking for grant money? And as long as it would be in the comprehensive plan, especially in the capital improvement area, which is certainly a capital improvement project? Would you not consider doing that?
Absolutely, absolutely. So not to get off the course of this too much, but it all relates together. You know, we had the assessment done by the engineer, city won it. All paved, pre-existing paved infrastructure. The city is in a lot worse condition than I originally anticipated. The true benefit about hiring the engineers through that grant was to help us better understand what our options are when we move forward. So it's simple to say that, well, we're just going to tear up the road and repaint it, okay? But this evaluation gave us the opportunity to look and say, okay, this road is sitting at midway. We can do repair or preventative maintenance to enhance the integrity of the road. So I think we're going to start saving a lot of money by addressing issues that are just now starting, as opposed to letting our roads completely deteriorate. I have, working on a plan to come up with a, put the money aside, start a separate account for the Danellon Heights area. As counsel moves forward in deciding, are we going to dedicate a portion of gas tax every year? Are we going to do a, an assessment, you know, road, a third, third, third? Or whatever the options are for counsel? Because we got denied the $6.5 million grant, but that doesn't mean we don't have other opportunities to keep applying for grants.
Well, I just think it would be very helpful in applying for a grant for you to say that we have had this in our comprehensive plan, in our capital improvement element for some time.
Absolutely.
Yes.
And I think we've already, not to cut you short, I'm sorry about that. But we've already established the fact that Danellon Heights is a priority for public health, safety, and welfare with the application of the first grant. We, obviously, we all know we received a little bit of the ARCA funds this year and coming up, an additional portion of ARCA funds, which is also tied in with Get America, Putting America Back to Work. I received notification the other day from a representative from ARCA where we may have an opportunity of applying for more of those funds to use here in the city. So without giving too much detail prior to my meeting with him, I am working on that.
Okay, counsel, we do have to move on.
Can we put this on the consent agenda for Monday night?
I would ask staff, if you have further reports, let's really give it to Cliff Notes. Give us what we need and we don't need, what we don't need. Okay.
Are we entirely consent, everyone?
Want to put it on the consent, yeah. Did you guys get my drift?
I got it.
Clear signs and yes.
Number 13, request for proposal, RFP 2022-03, wayfinding signs and maintenance services. So who is on that one?
This one is short and sweet, because I know you're waiting for it. And basically, it's just that, you know, an RFP has been created. It has been reviewed by our attorney for legal sufficiency, and it's ready for you guys to approve it so that we can move forward with the beautification of our historic district by creating this wayfinding sign that, as you know, they're going to give the city a unique feel.
There was, when this was discussed a couple of months ago, there was quite a bit of discussion about the overall expense of it.
Correct.
Right?
Yes. And so we do have the budget allocated for this, and it's just a matter of doing the RFP so that we can get quotes from different vendors and see what's the best course of-
Understood.
Do we have a basic design that they're going to be giving us?
Yes, so that is within the RFP.
Okay, cool.
So what are you, what are you needing from counsel?
For you to approve the going forward with the RFP so we can put it out for bidding.
Consent agenda?
Consent? This is just to start the process?
This is just to authorize us to go to bid.
Right.
If we don't hike the bids, we don't have to accept them.
Well, then does that mean we know where the signage is going to look at?
The signage is what you had looked at in the past and you had agreed on. It was the-
You gave the presentation.
Yes, I made the presentation previously, and it's the same signage layout. I'm not sure that we have. I can provide that to you via email. You have it? Awesome. Thank you.
It's the same as what was previously presented.
Well, I really hate to say this, because I have always been for signage in terms of elevating the looks of the city, certainly. But I did not realize it was going to be almost $300,000. That seems like a lot to me. And in addition to that, what is a concern truly is that we do not have our comprehensive plan available for the public to see. And certainly with that kind of money, we should be able to get our comp plan online, which would be ADA compliant. So if I had to choose between the wayfinding signs and having the comp plan published, that would be my choice.
This is CRA funds, and we can't use CRA funds to accomplish.
All right. The funding source, okay. That does seem, also, in regard to the signage, when I think of a signage, I thought that we would have some input in terms of what the public wanted. The design we have for the signage that we've shown us is black and white. Correct?
The logo up at the top. You have the logo on the top and the actual, you know, the post is black, and then you have the logo on the top. And that section in the middle is for businesses to, because those are wayfinding signs, and they just say wherever the business is. So you would have the business name there.
And the black and white is very clean and cut-looking in the foot in most little cities, like when I was in Colorado last weekend, that's exactly what was in Mulcahara. But those were the kind of signs that they had in the little towns that we were in. And it's black, it's white, it's clean, it's crisp, and it pops against any other building coloring. So you're never, you know, you don't get in a red with a blue background. So it's always very, not monotone, but it's very clean and crisp and organized looking, so.
And if you, I mean, you don't even have to go that far. You can go to the World at Western Center, and they have their, their wayfinding signs are very similar to ours. Ocala, their wayfinding signs are very similar to ours. So you have-
They're historic looking.
Yes, they are.
Well, I guess, can we just put this on the, are you going to be against it on Monday night?
I don't know. I'm going to go and look for some wayfinding signs.
I guess put this on the general.
No, we can put it on the consent, and then if you have an issue, we can take it off the consent. If just in my counsel, anything that's on consent, any one of us can remove it from consent.
I do know that, it just seems like a lot of money to leave.
And it might come in, just like our roads have. If they come into the underwriting, we don't know until we get a bid. If you say we have $300,000 in your budget, that doesn't necessarily mean- But we won't know until we solicit the proof.
It could be a lot less than what was quoted at the beginning.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Okay, so we'll put it on consent, and we all know how we can handle that. Okay, very good. Good discussion. That's the way you tear things down. I believe we're at number 14 now?
Yes.
Ordinance 2022-06, purchase of goods charter referendum. Who's on the lead on this?
Mr. Mayor. This is, counsel, this is a continuation of kind of amending our purchasing policy to allow staff to have more flexibility to be able to get things done. Last month, I believe it was last month, you finalized revising the improvement, the public improvement section, to allow us to just get quotes up to $35,000 rather than go to full seal bid. The same thing applies to goods. But with goods, it's a charter amendment, because there's a $5,000 limit for other purchases of goods. So this has to go to referendum if you want to continue with amending the policy and allow that, up to that $35,000 flexibility. It doesn't take away your approval process. Everything still comes to counsel for final approval. It just allows staff to expedite projects and purchases. So we're looking to put a charter amendment on the ballot in November, as well as revising the ordinance to allow for the purchase of goods up to over $5,000, but less than $35,000. Anything, of course, over $35,000, we can resist.
Okay, so Andrew, the elections and all that aren't that far off. Do we have enough time to do this?
It's already been prepared.
Already been prepared?
It's part of the package, so the ordinance is complete.
All right.
Do we even know how much this will cost us to go on the ballot?
I don't think it will be anything.
What if they do a little PR campaign, intimidation, the audience?
So we've already discussed all the details.
Yes, so he would have first reading of the ordinance on Monday, which would move it to public hearing next month. You have your public hearing and final reading in July. And I have communicated with Wesley at the supervisor of elections that does give us enough time to get it to him before print on the ballot.
So you just answered my question. We do have time, because you contacted Wesley. All right, not quite the answer you gave me. And nonetheless, it's the same.
Apologize? There you go.
Okay. Want to put this on the consent agenda?
No, he has a good first reading.
Oh, that's right, okay. Put it on the regular agenda then, thank you. Any other comments before we move on? Okay, here's a good one right here. Number 15, the continued discussion of the boat launch fees. Quick review. The city has always owned the boat launch, and the city has owned, always owned, parking area connected to the boat launch. But the city back in the 1960s made an agreement with the state of Florida that even though we own it, they would manage it for us, pretty much guaranteeing that there would be access to the river. Fifty years went on by, and it came time to discuss renewing that agreement again. We felt that we weren't getting much at this point. The original agreement in the 60s, I think, was probably when the boat ramp was built and a lot of money was put into it. But since then, there's just been not much. So we actually have not renewed our agreement with the state. So now we are in total control of the boat ramp and the parking associated with it. So this discussion is that now that we are responsible for its upkeep, we need to have a source of revenue to repair it as it needs to be repaired. It's pretty much an accepted thing now in most communities that there are boat launch fees just about everywhere now. It's not anything that's new or controversial. So the discussion is, if we are going to do that, what's the best way of implementing it and regulating it and putting it in play? Jan, you said you wanted to speak to this?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I reached out to Premium, and I've got two things to report. So before, maybe you react to the first? You hear both. I reached out and expressed your concern about the high violation fee. And because of their recovering their capital charges, accepting our responsibility from maintenance on the cameras, processing any voids, any notices, they would at least need $50,000. So we could set our launch fee, but then there would be a $50,000 non-payment fee rather than calling it a violation. The percentage would also need to be, they have to change that, it would have to be a 90-10 split, 90 for the company, 10% for the city, again, until they recover their capital, their initial capital charges, not the ongoing. So, but they're still willing to work with us if we want to go the camera route. I could go back to them, and we could try and negotiate further. The other item, I asked about a kiosk, because it was expressed the difficulty in using their app on a cell phone. So I pursued a kiosk. A kiosk, now, you just received information today, so I don't think I have all the information that's needed. The initial fee is $10,000, and it's ours. It includes installation and licenses. I'm not sure what licenses are tied to this. I did ask him further questions, but he didn't come off to me. But when we researched parking kiosks, there were monthly fees associated with that because of credit card processing and recording. So my gut reaction is, there's an initial $10,000 that we would be putting out for the kiosk, but there would be monthly ongoing fees, which I would need to get more information. But that may be the route you want to go, since people are more familiar with, like, working in ATM. So these are your two options. I can continue to negotiate the camera side, but the kiosk side, I don't believe there would be room for negotiation with that. There may be, but like with parking meters, it was a fixed cost for the kiosk that we were looking at than the monthly ongoing processing fees.
So the kiosk would also include the camera? It would just be totally separate?
It would be totally separate. It would be up to us to monitor any violations. So my thought is, and again, I didn't have the opportunity to have any more questions, but you make a payment at the kiosk, you get a little piece of paper, you put it in the windshield of your vehicle to show that you paid the launch fee, and then it would be up to our police department to monitor it. There would be no cameras.
So then if someone launched and did not pay their fee, then they would get a ticket?
If they get caught.
If, well, they should get caught, because we have a very diligent police department.
They put the kayak in the back of their truck. The trailer. They launched their kayak in the back of part of their truck on this side of the parking lot. The police would not be able to immediately know that they were a voter versus a patron of a city business. So that could escape us. So now, couldn't that be too far between? Probably. But it just depends on what you're looking for. If you're looking for a camera system, then maybe there's, I don't know if we could install cameras.
So it's issued for non-payment with a kiosk?
No, they would not be, well, our police would have to-
Yes, yes, let me finish my thought. We would tap- We would capture, the police would capture that fine?
Yes.
All of it?
Yes, except maybe in an ordinance.
Right. So if it was a $50 fee, then 90% of going to a company. Most of it would be going to the city, correct? So that would quite possibly make the $10,000 fee of the kiosk go away pretty quickly. No, no, but anyway.
Chief, real quick, would the city re...
Chief does, I mean, the police.
Chief, do you know if we did a fee for parking without getting a permit, would the city get the whole $50 or would it be like a traffic ticket and we split?
It'd be like the rest of our tickets, have to go through the clerk's office and we would get probably 40 bucks of the 50. We would not get all of it.
Okay, that's what I wanted to make sure. Again, you know, I've been traveling a lot, going in and out of places and everything and every age, they're either doing the cameras at different locations or they're doing just the big scanners, you know, the IQ, the... I think I'll call this in the QR code. The QR codes. And again, I know that we're concerned about the more, my mother, who is maybe not as out as a 20-year-old, but that is just the way everybody does it. And a boater is more than likely going to be used to either getting the camera or doing, you know, a QR code. So, and having to put in, we might have to go out there and put in numbers, but I even think we should, because what I'm thinking of is if we just do it for right here, but we're missing the people that are trailering in and parking over there back behind dinner bell. They're trailering and they're parking back over there in our overflow parking. They're trailering and they're parking, parking on the side of the road. We're missing those funds if we're just asking them to come in here and park and get a ticket out of our kiosk because, you know, they're not parking here, so they don't think they're going to need it over there. But if they're having to put any type of a flotation device into our photograph, that is where we can get our funding. It's what our process is.
All I can say is from our visit that Mandy and I made to Crystal River when we checked it out, that there was confusion by people on how to do this. The four individuals that were launching at that time, one had done it before, was good to go. Two were getting ready to leave because they thought it was like the Sunpass system. They knew that it was a camera. They just assumed that they would be billed after the fact. They didn't, if it wasn't for us telling them, they were going to go out there and wind up with a $200 fine and they didn't even know it. And one person, it must have taken them the best part of 20 minutes to figure out how to do it with their camera. And one of the things that was a problem that I noticed, it's in the middle of the day, the reflection from the sun makes it where you can't, you know, deal with your camera. You can't see it and then it gives you reverse the call. We have one ramp here and we all know what it's like on a Saturday in the summer. There's boats, almost trailers can't even get into the parking lot on 41. You have one person down there that has their boat launched and they can't figure out how to do this. It would be total chaos, total. And from what I saw, Mandy will back me. We saw chaos with four boats where there were four slots for ramps. Correct, Mandy?
Yes, sir. And there was some difficulty even among some of the younger generation that we encountered here. Excuse me, Mayor, I'm going to have to pause for a second. We're having these internet problems and we just got kicked out of Zoom. Give me just a second.
So my question is, if we can just discuss, is not necessarily with this company, is there another company that has it set up like the Sunpass system where people just pull up, they use the ramp, it takes a picture and they're spent a bill? If that technology is out there because that's how the term fight...
Crystal River, Citrus County. Are we allowed to be talking to you?
I don't know.
I'm recording it, it's just not being, the meeting is still being recorded on our digital system internally, it's just not being through the... So anybody that's on Zoom right now trying to listen, they're not getting any. So Zoom is still running behind the scenes, okay.
Just waiting for the log to get this one to come here right then.
Okay, so I guess, go ahead, Jan.
Citrus County did a lot of research on companies that have a boat launch boat. And they came up with, and they researched PayStation, a kiosk versus the mobile app. So there aren't that many companies out there that do provide this. And based on their chart and what they were looking for, Premium was the best choice. Now, what I can do, if you're looking more toward a kiosk type thing, I can go back and contact these companies to see if with a kiosk, would they provide a camera system? And if so, what would be the cost for something like that? So you get maybe the ease of a kiosk and ATM, for lack of a better terminology, and yet maybe a camera system to catch a hot air. So let me do a little more research.
So to continue this, because this is one of those things, if we don't get this thing right, if we don't get this right, this will be an explosion.
So that's why I'm asking.
So the question I would have is four years ago, this, the council and I believe Vice Mayor was part of that council, passed the ordinance to have parking and to be able to charge. Okay, good, good. So at that time, council had discussed putting a kiosk in as their way of...
Yes.
Correct?
Yes.
So...
But no cameras?
Right.
Right.
So, I mean, this is, the concept that I'm talking about was what was going to be used if we were going to start charging for parking, where you would have, you pull in a parking spot, you'd have to pay how much the fee was per hour, whatever it was, $2 an hour, I remember the discussion, whatever it was.
Right, we were just...
Right, right, but it was passed. A lot of people don't know that the ordinance has already passed and is in place for the city to plug in charging parking lots. It's already done. So along with that discussion was collection of the fee with the kiosk.
Yes, sir.
Right?
She brought us a great presentation when he did all that.
All right, so what do you want to do with this, Jan?
If you want me to pursue contacting these companies, pursuing the kiosk angle, but would they have a camera set up that they could then bill somebody who doesn't pay? See, you know, they're not necessarily in the business of accounts receivable, which is what we're talking about. They're in the business of providing a PayStation for use with their participation on a very limited basis. As far as billing after the fact, I don't know if there's a company out there that would act like Sunpass for our boat launch.
Well, I think between our main lot and the auxiliary lot, we have somewhere, I counted it, I can't remember the figure, that it's somewhere around 25 parking spots for boats and trailers. So if we weren't that concerned about people that were parking on the side of the road, we do have 25 parking spots that you could charge to park there.
So you would want them to install parking meters then instead of...
Well, that could be a way of doing it if we can't do it the other way.
We certainly could.
You would be charged a fee not to use the ramp, but you'd be charged a fee to park.
You won't capture all the, those that use the boat ramp?
That's correct.
Several, I've seen several vehicles park on the opposite side of the parking lot and have kayaks in the back of their vehicle. So you will, you will lose some revenue opportunity, but it just depends on what you want to do. Can you take, go ahead and lose that portion of the revenue and capture the revenue for those that have trailers where we could install parking meters? You could go any route you want to. I just need direction on what you would like me to pursue research.
I would think, I would think council would just like you to continue what you're doing, come up with some ideas and we'll take it from there.
Just real quick, I just did $10, 300 boats, cars a day on a weekend. That's $3,000, that's, what did I say, $12,000 for the month? And that would, and if they took their 90%, that would give us $1,200 a month.
Well, I have a comment I'd like to make. I am very concerned, and I think the mayor is, and I agree with him on this issue if I'm understanding, that we want something people-friendly. And if you wanted to go ahead and investigate further the kiosk, I think that would be appropriate.
And that's where I was going with that.
Yes, that's what I understood.
People won't complain so much about the 10 because it's like it's out there, but they will go wild if this creates confusion and whatever, where the boats can't get in and out. We also know there's other activity in that area right now, right? So there's a lot of things going on. It's got to be smooth, it's got to be, I like that word, it's got to be consumer-friendly.
Right, it's just the camera side of things would be an added expense that I can see where Premium would need to recover their capital costs. It's definitely, definitely a legitimate business expense to be repaid. How quickly they recover it is up to how many don't care. It could be, they could recover their money in a month if we have a lot of people that just ignore it and say, "I'm not paying" and go right on through the 12-hour. But, you know, that was just an extremely... Let me do a little more research and see what I can come back with and maybe, maybe the next time there'll be something that you all, you know, will like.
All right, let's move on to 16, discussion requests for presentations. Mandy, did you want to say something to this or would you like me to take the lead on this?
I want to point a couple things out. Jason? I just want to point one thing out on the launch fee subject. Back, going back to the visit to Crystal River, where this is working for them at this particular launch, there's four slips.
Yeah.
Where we have one. So if you've got one person trying to figure out how to use this QR code and pay on their phone and all that, after they've already, say, pulled down there and they're blocking traffic, you know, if that's the case that no one's allowed to launch in Crystal River, you've got three other slips. So I do see that being problematic as far as it backing up traffic down there. Just my thought.
Right.
So on the request for presentations, our resolution on this goes back to 2013? So here's the problem. First of all, since this resolution, it's been determined by our legal counsel that it would be our best practice to publish our agenda seven days in advance based on some previous case law.
AG opinion, yes.
And, what was that, Andrew?
AG, AG opinion, yes.
AG, okay. So we're publishing the agenda seven days in advance in a workshop and we meet our requirement for city council meetings. Even though the council meeting agenda won't be published until tomorrow or Monday, we put all of those items at the bottom of the workshop agenda when it's published. So all that is noticed well in advance of seven days. But the way the current resolution reads is that workshop sessions of the city council shall be held on Wednesday preceding the second Monday begin at 5:30. Persons wishing to place an item on the workshop agenda must make a written request to the same to the city clerk order before 12:00 p.m. of Friday before the workshop meeting. The problem is, at that point, the agenda is already published. My second problem with this is that it does not give us any room to control how many requests must be granted. If I receive 10 requests by the deadline, do I, am I, what right do I have to say, "Well, you know, I've already got five, I can only take five at a time"? You know, so there's nothing in place for us to control how many presentations someone can ask to be placed on the agenda at any given time. So there's just a, the resolution needs to be updated because of the deadline, number one. But when we do that, I was looking for some input from council on how you want to manage these requests when they come in.
That's an excellent question. As you can see, I had a number of things business-wise we have to go over and how extensively council goes through these. We are in a situation that if we get bombarded with requests for presentations, it really becomes, we don't have enough time to do business. So it's kind of a tricky, this council really wants people to be involved and we want you to be here and we want to hear what you have to say. But what do we do if on any given night, we have, like Mandy said, she gets six requests for presentations? Then people are going to talk anywhere from 10 to 15 minutes apiece.
Well, I mean, and this would be just my theory, if a presentation is just, like going to be three minutes long...
Three minutes?
Three minutes.
Not a presentation.
Yeah, it is. Give it everything and get it done. Because a presentation, I mean, a presentation can be as simple as, "We are the bike motorcycle group, we're here to ask, you know, we're here to, you know, ask for y'all to do a resolution."
Well, I think that's something, if it's going to be a three-minute deal, that's when people will take advantage of public comment.
Well, that's what I'm saying, maybe that's how we need to educate the public is, "And you don't need to do a presentation, but sign up for the three minutes if you can do it within there." Otherwise, you know, if it's a five, I think 10 minutes unless it's just a, unless it's a presentation on, I don't know, like when we...
Well, just like Mr. Porter tonight, you know, and he asked to make a presentation. So if I had had five people ask to make similar presentations, at what point do I have to...
They would have gathered them out of there.
Do I say, you know, the policy is, you know, we limit requests to three per meeting or two per meeting and that's based on, you know, first in line. Once, you know, you get your request in first, you get on the agenda. If not, you have to wait till the next month and you can put a time limit.
Andrew, this is a, you have to make comment on this. We don't want to be in a position where we're deciding who can speak and who can't speak. We want everybody to speak, but how do you...
First come, first served.
How do you control the numbers? How do you finally say, "Okay, this is all we can handle because we have things..."
We won't get out of here until 10.
Well, I don't know that it needs to be, that it needs to be a firm number. I think you can provide discretion within the resolution to city clerk who sets the agenda to place presentations on when it fits the schedule. Sometimes council has a light schedule, sometimes council has a heavier schedule. And so, you know, there's no guarantee, there's always that, all that is required is to have those public comment periods. So allowing presentations is an additional, you know, outreach to the public that Dunellen allows, not all cities do. So there doesn't need to be a guarantee by numbers per, I mean, you can do it that way and limit it, you know, via numbers and it's first in line, first come, first served. Or it doesn't need to be that rigid. It can simply be that it'll be placed on the agenda when it's determined that it fits. And in the meantime, if someone's waiting to make a presentation, they're allowed their three minutes until they can get on for presentation.
Well, what we don't want to do is create a position where someone can decide who's going to be, who's going to present and who isn't based on their own individual personal bias, let's say.
It should be first come, first served.
We like to think that the human, we like to... We like to think that the human, we like to think human beings are altruistic and fair and square and whatever, but we all have a tendency to have our likes and dislikes. So I wouldn't want to put anybody in a position that they can decide who can make a presentation, who doesn't, based on a personal feeling toward that individual, whether or not you like what they're going to talk about, you know? So I, I just don't want to empower someone who can, who can pretty much decide who can speak and who can't. It's a little bit scary to me.
We've always done it that way, though, basically haven't.
Well, right now, Mandy, if you ask, they're in, right?
I, I've never told anyone no unless they contacted me after the deadline.
Think about that, Andrew, okay?
Yeah, there must be a way to wait things that are of public interest. For example, Mr. Porter's presentation. Mr. Porter was speaking to something that was very critical to most of the people that were in this room. We wouldn't want him to be limited in what he could do because he came in with a lot of good information. So we do need public input.
You can, there's a few things you can do. You can, as a council, requests can come to you and you can grant requests for the ones that you want to grant. Now, that's a collective body, I understand what you're saying, providing power to one individual, but you can have it that way. What I, what I was suggesting is not giving discretion to any staff member to not allow someone to make a presentation, but simply to have discretion, "Hey, this meeting is full, we've got 40 items on the agenda, it doesn't fit." So you'll still be able to speak, but next meeting, or when there's a light enough agenda to accommodate, you know, a certain number of speakers, whatever that may be. So that'd be very loose. Another option would be to limit it to one or two presentations per meeting and then it's first come, first served. These are, these are just ideas, as I said, you know, it's, it's not something that every community does, so I don't have a, you know.
I would wonder how the, how the Marion County Board of Commissioners, if someone contacted them in a timely manner and said they wanted to make a presentation, how do they vet that out? You automatically get to make a presentation or do they say, "What do you want to talk about?" Someone decides it? I mean, how, how does that work?
I'll have to, I'll have to reach out and try to...
Now, one of the things we had discussed previously that council wasn't too high on is the idea if you contact the office a week ahead of time, or whatever the time may be, like Broward County does, then you can extend your talk time to five minutes. So that might be, that might be...
Remember, I did that presentation to you? And nobody does that because, well, the lecture have a five minute, but you would, yeah, okay, I'm sorry, but yeah, I mean, you would have had to do it in seven days before, that's a presentation. But that was more through his board group.
So I was just thinking, if we somehow put a limit on the presentation, but gave people the option of an extended time to speak, that might work.
Did you see how long we talked tonight? I mean, again, I'm not, please, everybody, I'm not not listening to any of y'all. Please, please understand that. I, I am all for hearing y'all all day long, but we ran almost until 7:15.
Forty-five minutes, not 10.
Forty-five minutes, thank you. Just for, for public, and again, y'all, come on, but...
That's why we're talking about that.
... conditional, get back with us and see how other cities do it, why don't you?
We will, I just, I just wanted to get a little bit of feedback from you to kind of get...
I mean, the real question would be, if Mr. Porter wanted to make this exact presentation to the county, if he called down there in a timely manner, would he automatically be given presentation time?
You want to try that one?
I can, I can look into that information.
Just checking this. Will you check it? You know, staff, give us some ideas, okay? But don't take this as we want to limit it, we want, we want to hear what you have to say. Okay, number 17, proclamation request.
How did he did this?
No, Reverend Patrick Augustine, the Holy Faith Episcopal Church is asking for a proclamation.
Is it, is it a different reverend?
I think it's a different one, but I forgot. I forgot the other one's name, the other one's name's Paul.
I do know, I have met him before, he does charity work throughout the world in impoverished countries. He goes, he's kind of like a missionary person.
Okay.
So he asked.
It's Bishop Patrick Augustine of Boer, Sudan, South Africa, will be here at Holy Faith the weekend of July 1st through the 3rd. He'll be visiting and they requested this proclamation. We're not presenting it on Monday, I'll just have it on consent for you to approve. They would like it presented the weekend, I think it's July 3rd that they want it presented.
They're going to present it to him?
Well, we hope that the mayor will.
They might request you.
I don't know.
Okay, all right, let's see how it goes. All right, very good. So that's going to be on consent agenda?
Yes.
Okay, we're getting number 18, council. I know you all are hanging in here because you want to hear council comments, you're not here because you're waiting for number 20, right?
Right.
May I read councilwoman coverage of now?
Oh, yeah.
Remember I said I wrote a written document for this woman coverage, people had to do that.
Okay, council comments, Ms. Covish, ready to comment?
Okay. She sent me this on Tuesday. I talked to Troy this AM, he brought me up to speed on agenda issues and other matters. My plan is to be back in the city council seat in July. In the meantime, I will be keeping track of city business, albeit 20 minutes at a time for now. Best news, my femur did not fracture during the revision procedure. There is lots of bone loss, the plastic part that was, the root of, root of all evil had actually broken in half and was coming out of the implant. She had hip, hip implant replacement. I am walking with a walker, no physical therapy as it is too weak a joint at this time for anything related to exercise. Time will heal the situation, six months at least before I'm able to walk without a cane. My mother passed away in Pittsboro, North Carolina, three days prior to my surgery. My mother no longer suffers and my oldest brother and younger sister were with him, with her at the hospital facility. I've spent much time on the phone with friends and family over the last several days and this has helped me get over the big pain hump. The rest of the recovery will be easier. Thanks to my many Dunellen friends, I am in good spirits and the tomatoes in the garden are going to give use. Mandy, could you please read this note at the start of the city council workshop? Thanks and I miss you all.
Please send her, please send her a get well card or something, if she needs something, let us know, please. If they need a dinner, if they...
Thank you.
Bill will be happy to bring something and take it to her and then do the dishes afterwards. That was on the consent agenda, I'm pretty sure.
Ms. Kenny, do you have any comment?
No, I do not.
Ms. Williams, vice mayor?
Um, yeah, hey, I just want everybody to know, please, know, I love for y'all to talk to us, so please do know that. I did receive some emails today and I was pretty disturbed by them, so I don't know how we're going to be handling that. Anybody else in the council have a chance to read them?
I did a couple of them.
I was just disturbed that, that some visitors to our town felt like their private, privacy was being invaded. And that's disturbing to me. And I, I just would like clarification that if we, as a city council member, we have to get permission or get votes to do things for the city and as a representative, am I misunderstanding that? If I were to go to the elementary school and say, without having permission, and start saying that I'm the vice mayor for the city of Dunellen and, I don't know. I, I, I just think that there have been some steps overtaken. And I think that that needs to kind of get reined back in a little bit.
I don't really know.
There were some letters sent, I guess the mayor took it upon himself, to take pictures of visitors to our city getting on and off a launch. They walked off the Blue Run Park property onto a public road. San Jose, thank you, I don't have that word. And pictures were taken, they were asked to stop. And according to the letters from these visitors to our city, when they asked, "Why are you doing this?", it was stated that it's because I'm the mayor of the city of Dunellen and I'm here in official business. This is how the letter was written.
The email, yes.
Yes, that from the visitors. There was, again, there was the issue that a mother asked if the pictures are not to be taken anymore or if their children remain to, and the pictures were still taken. So I, I just think that, I understand that I assume the mayor is just trying to, because I know we get lots of pictures, I always harass them about, is trying to do what he thinks is trying to protect the Blue Run Park and the citizens and our investment. But I think from the letters, and of course I'd love to hear your side, that it's gone just a little too far. We, we as a city council make decisions of what actions are to be made and not made, and neither of us as individuals can go out and give a presentation, a presentation that we are acting on behalf of the city when we're not in that authority role.
I don't think it's appropriate to discuss it in this form. I really don't.
Ma'am, there's no other way to discuss it.
Because you are only talking, or you've only read a letter from one side, we have not discussed it.
I just, but, Ms. Kenny, and I would love to take Mr. Bill into the back room and ask him what happened, but sadly, you and I can't do that. I have to take Mr. Vellatri out into the public and if, if you could feel my insides right now, I am shaking because I'm not trying to get a bad feeling between...
I just see it's inappropriate.
Well, ma'am, it is inappropriate because this is the only way you and I can communicate. Well, how else am I going to communicate, ma'am?
Let me just speak to this. Right now, since the Blue Run ordinance has been passed, and y'all know I live next to the park, I swing, and my mother lives in Dunellen Heights. I swing by that park often to see how the Blue Run ordinance is working. I also have seen activity of people from commercial vendors entering that park, walking through the woods and catching the shuttle on the other side of the park. I've taken pictures of these and documented them. Every picture I've taken has been sent in to the city. It is official business with descriptions of what I was doing and what I was trying to show. So you are more than welcome, if you want to look at the pictures I took and the description underneath them of what day it was, what time and what my intent was, you're very welcome to do that. They've been shared with the attorney, they've been shared with the chief, they've been shared with Mandy with the intent of what it was to, to make sure that the Blue Run Park ordinance was being followed.
Was it?
That is something we'll have to discuss.
I'm just saying that it was very disturbing that we received outside.
Well, now you, now you've heard my explanation.
I appreciate that.
Okay? And it's all documented, it's all in city, city has all the pictures, everything I've taken, it's all there. There's nothing hidden in the purpose for the pictures are there. So there is nothing, there is nothing more to it than that. A park is a public place. Legally, there is no right to the expectation, expectation of privacy in a public park. You can take a picture of anybody or anything you want in that situation. I identified myself to the people out of politeness that I was the mayor and I was taking these pictures for, to, to see how this was going. So I don't really have much more to say than that. And as far, one last thing I would say, I totally disagree with you. This was something that the previous mayor tried to do, to try to control what council members can and can't do in between meetings. We all, in between meetings, cannot converse with each other, we can't communicate with each other. We have a responsibility in the 30 days between meetings to go out and seek and find information, talk to the people, look at things, check on things. And then when we come back and, as you said, we can finally speak together, we share the information we have found in between meetings. I totally reject any suggestion that a council person has a halter and a shank over their nose over what they can do and what they can't do in between meetings as far as communicating with the people in the city, finding out information about what's going on here, asking questions, staying, keeping your finger on the pulse of what's going on here. Totally reject any suggestion that council members shouldn't be out there doing these sort of things.
Well, I just want to say, when I read, when I read the emails, the one thing that came to me as a councilwoman is, if I see anything that's going, I'm just not one to take pictures without permission, I just won't do that. But if I see something that I feel like is a violation, a real violation, a serious problem, then I will call law enforcement. I would get in touch with law enforcement and that's just it for me. I'm not going to get into it.
Well, I would suggest, I would suggest to you...
That's all, that's just me.
To ask to look at the photos. And if there's anything in those photos that you think...
Oh, I saw some photos.
So they're, they're there. So show, if someone showed me what the photos that were taken, it would have anything to do with being suggested here. I have nothing really to say.
No, I'm not accusing you of anything, I'm just saying as far as I'm concerned...
I mean, this is just, this is just somebody fabricating something.
So that's two different...
So, I mean, it's all there, it's all for everybody to see. Like I say, chief has every photo, everything that I've said, Mandy has it, it's all public record. Anybody who asks for public record can see everything.
I would just hate for my child to be in public record now forever and ever. So that would be without my permission. I, I'm just asking for maybe some more.
Look at the pictures. Okay, that was an interesting way to end the very disappointing feeling.
Reporting in progress.
I have a, just something that I have to ask either chief or Troy. Once in a while, the traffic backs up really bad in Pennsylvania Avenue for a reason that it doesn't make any sense because then when you go there 10 minutes later, the traffic on Pennsylvania Avenue has pretty much moved out. So investigating, as I do, in between council meetings, I went out there and stood there by the light and tried to watch what the light are. Didn't have to ask permission to do that. And I noticed that that light, sometimes that turn arrow doesn't come on at the beginning of the green cycle. So what happens, if you're sitting at that light, wanting to get on 41... So what happens, if you're sitting at that light wanting to get on 41, and you're wanting to make a left-hand turn, most of the time, it turns green with a left turn signal. So you can go. The folks on the other side of 41, they have red, so they're stuck. Then both ways turn green, and you can turn left if you have an opportunity. And that's it. Once in a while, that left turn signal does not come on at the beginning. And so you can't make that left turn when cars coming the other way. So then you can make the turn. Eventually, when I was watching, four cars, when cars were coming the other way, four cars were all that could turn. But then for some reason, the light then starts operating properly and the traffic dissipates. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention, Chief and Troy. I don't know if that's something you're aware of.
We're waiting on these storms and the traffic, like people who were there today.
Is there somewhere else?
Yes. There's stuff again today, and we called in, and they were there today. So we'll be checking it also to make sure that they have finished it.
Okay. So that's my comments. Okay, it looks like everybody on council has made a comment. Mr. Hand, would you have anything more to say to us?
With notes. Yes, sir. I was asked to provide an update on billboards. So an ordinance has been drafted that addresses non-conforming regulations regarding repair and damage to non-conforming signs in the event of, you know, whether they must be taken down past a certain percentage. Some of those regulations were in city code previously but not specific signage. So it's been updated, made more stringent. They're part of the ordinance, along with maintenance requirements and safety regulations, as well as authorization to now that the owners of the remaining signs within the city have been identified, along with authorization for staff to contact us, certain owners, and discuss removal over a period of time. That'll be coming forth to Planning Commission at the next meeting.
Hey, thanks very much. Anything else?
That is it, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Yeah.
No.
Yeah, you guys picked up on that. All right, we're at number 20, public comment. So I guess we just go where the races are heading. Okay, Paul. Still the same, the same thing, name and address.
Right. I'm Dr. Bojor, candidate for State House District 23, 24th South Jefferson Street for 44 years. I've been fighting tolls since 2018. Well, it's always been meant to be the right. Despite by finding the R-74 relief passport says that its history should be improved, rather than expanding some of those power, it was a high extension. The Zulu nonetheless pushed both. Besides that, I advocated the toxic sludge to be transported from Fort Myers to North River River, which I had to fly off in 2018. It was in 2019. He voted yes to the committee's substitute to send bill 768, May 1st, 2019, where he also besides turn by extension, sent Suncoast Parkway to Georgia. There was a massive resistance down low, it was a little loaded yes, within the committee's substitute to send bill 100, 107, 2021, which canceled roads like the toll law. But okay, some of the citizens are leaving, owing to small towns and RV businesses and small businesses. The wild card, lakes, streams destroying our aquifer. Airways, professors, others helping, Republicans, Democrats, nonparties. And the Zulu nonetheless funded studies costing $35 million a year for some 20 years. The Zulu was whole heckled by house leadership, Chuck Clemens of Gainesville, the house in York. The Zulu is all about big companies like CMA, exposing destruction of houses and environmental harm in Nando County. The Zulu is constitutional offices, but it is also a policy of Florida to conservative and protective natural resources and senior community in Article 2, Section 7 of the Florida Constitution. So you shouldn't put us through this. People have been eminent domain in Ohio, is my very current source of the house, eminent domain with Cross Bronx Expressway, and my dad lost some property on Long Island to the Sunrise Highway Extension, forcing my family to raise a new York City housing project. Then I moved to Citrus County 44 years ago. What he's not telling you is, they said it was a done deal in Citrus County, but I researched the ankle breaker that made it disappear. The evacuation route is based on health and safety, this theory, but the police powers come into effect. But the real health and safety was the thin sable gas pipelines as compared to the East Coast. Combine that with the prescribed burns that Swiftmont had with its four routes. So smoke, fire, with gas. So we had competing health and safety issues. It's mixed for now, this thin undeveloped, they said this thin pipeline was given because our area is undeveloped and there would be no high-speed highways. I hope it's just not a delay for the election. Why don't the Zulu stop kowtowing to the petrochemical industry? Stop waterside spraying by FDDC? We'd like to speak accurately, poisoning on manatees, can't get cancer. Crystal River is second highest in manatee death rate due to poison. Let's prevent the poisoning and save the treatment for us. I'm working with conservation group statewide. Representatives of the Zulu need to follow what we both do at medical school. Do know.
Thank you very, very much. Would anyone else like to speak?
Chris Anderson, 1116, South Jefferson Street. Just kind of clarify some of the things that this answer touched on. Some of you all might have received this information. Some other members of the general public might not be aware. But there were some recent events that occurred over the past weekend. You know, there was some harassment that has been recently occurring on multiple occasions by Mayor White, with our company and our customers. There were some letters that were sent in by separate customers and separate groups, separate days, you know, who have had a very uncomfortable encounter with Mayor White, taking photos of them and their children in their bathing suits. He has taken upon himself, his official pass, explaining official city business without announcing who he was until asked and after taking such photos. I do need to call these events, ever being directed by other council to direct the mayor to photograph their children in their bikinis and bathing suits without public consent, to them become part of the public record even after being asked not to, regardless of his intent. I can understand the mayor's personal frustration, but we have been operating in a conconfrontation with law, and we have had all relevant sources to be provided to the council, not violating all school ordinances. For the law allows us temporarily for purposes of while actually days loading around or partially passengers. In addition, momentarily pick up discharge passengers. Our company is not engaging in commercial pickups within the Blue Run Park as it contains the Blue Run Park ordinance. We all do need to be reminded that the engagement of expressive activities is protected by the First Amendment, which includes any member of the public to walk in a public park peacefully without being harassed by government officials and their official passes, such as being harassed by Mayor Bill White. In addition, it's just inexcusable and unethical and abuse of power of the current members of the city of Dan Allen to try and assert his own political power, which is well documented on public record, on city staff, on any other member of the police department, likely targeted local businesses or enforcement law that does not exist and therefore is not legal. You know, pressuring any member of the police department, exercising police powers, or forcing them not to violate the law, is unethical. But it also goes against the oath that they have sworn to uphold. So, you know, that kind of just, that's not coming from me. These letters are coming from guests that visit the town, that had interaction. Who is this, who is this man? Why is he taking pictures of me? You know, and they have young children. If any of you all have any daughters or grandchildren, would you like to put pictures taken and put on public record? If they did, their racing suits at the beginning is all about consistency. I don't think so. It's very wrong. At some point in time, you know, some of those shenanigans. Thank you for your time.
Would anyone else like to speak?
Yes.
Hi, Chris. One person just found that, are you clear?
One person just found that.
Glad we did.
No, no, no.
I'm totally sorry. I'm trying to get another camera.
My name is Barbara Ocasio, and I'm at 12258 North Garden Ave, and Citrus Springs. I just want to clarify a little things that Mazuho had said today earlier as he was looking at me, which is fine. He said there was five prospects, proposed routes, there's only four. The fifth is our option of no build. And when he says that, just because of, everybody put your hands up in the room. That's how it pulled, no, that's not what happened. The Chronicle gave a poll before the Suncoast even was built. 67% of the Chronicle people said no. I went to work to door when I found out what they were going to do to my parents' home. My dad's a 30-year vet. I'm cold. It's cold, didn't even got jackets. So my dad's a 30-year vet. He went to Korea twice, Vietnam once. I grew up mostly, my mother being my dad. Oh, George, you're awesome. Thank you so much. He loves me. So, so my mother raised me mostly in Germany, back and forth. Army brat, 30 years for life. So, my dad. They went to three different states looking for their forever home. Never told my German grandmother that she was going, you know, that they were going to move forever here. They did their favorite spot. Didn't know that it was going to be in the purple route, their dream home. Their American dream turned into a nightmare. That is why I'm in all the meetings I can with my partner in crime, but she was having a bad day. I took her home to daddy. And I just also want you to know that when you really think about the eminent domain, who pays for that? The half payers pay for them to be kicked out of their own forever home. Pretty sad. No build, only option. Thank you, guys. Stand strong here.
She's going up with your jacket.
That's all right.
All right, anyone else like to speak?
First, I'd like to let everybody know that the police stood out, raised good job over Memorial Weekend, keeping the manam on the river under control. That officer was out there both days, spent three days from early morning till dark. And without that person out there, it would have been crazy. So just really thank them for keeping everybody safe out there on the river that weekend. For the boat launch topic, does Sunpass use a company to do what you're asking? You know, take a picture out of it, or Sunpass themselves do it? Or if they hired a company to do it, might be worth exploring if they have a company. On the EV charging station, I don't have an EV, but if I did, what prevents me from parking my car there and charging it up for free?
That's the whole point. You can't. That's the whole point. We want you to charge it for free.
What keeps me from not moving it?
I'll take it out.
Okay, so just, you know, I'm always the advocate. The next one is, I keep forgetting to ask this. I meant to way back when, and we're talking about hiring a code enforcement person. And then Georgine reminded me of it today, when somebody had been trained and left. But what keeps, when we hire new people, for example, code enforcement person that will pay to certify, is there anything that requires that person to work so many months, years, whatever? So that once we have paid to train them, then they're more marketable? And then stop them from leaving for cleaner passengers before $3,000? I know a lot of businesses, you know, I don't know if this is not business. You know, a lot of businesses do that to retain before they'll train us. And then the very last thing, and I got kind of ugly at the end here. Keep fighting for us, Mayor. Politics is nasty business, and I'm not going to anybody but it while. And then finally, I said before, I wish everybody knew how hard the staff works. Everything y'all do, follow, and counsel, to keep things moving in the right direction for the city. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for staying here. Bring pizza next time.
Anyone else would like to speak? Okay, Ms. Yarmulke.
I was going to go over that whiles.
For DJR 116 this morning, can't find, just a thought when you're talking about the short-term rentals. And thank you, David Porter, excellent presentation. So you really add a bit of that republic and capital to the wheel to find a solution. The next thing you'll have to think about is how to track it and enforcement. There was a headline in Citrus County Chronicle, I didn't read the entire article, that they were to vote on a company that will do the tracking for the short-term rentals. And I think it was around $13,000 they were quoted. So that's something our staff might want to reach out and give a few details, and then maybe add something to this budget discussion that will be coming around very soon for that. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, ma'am.
Okay, anyone else? Yes, sir, name and address. Tom Golden, I do not live in the city. May I say anything?
Yes, yes.
Okay, 8875 Southwest 140th Avenue, Dan Allen, Florida 34432. This will be real quick to presentations and the boat ramp. I'd be glad to purchase an annual sticker just to make my process go faster down at the ramp, just like we get a license plates, and even on my boat, it's got an annual sticker. I don't know if that's remotely possible. And I know you're going to do some research on the, on the presentations. Maybe at the presentators could provide a hard copy or could provide a PDF for online. And I know we had a young lady who helps with the internet, or maybe the presentators could upload their presentation before the council meeting, and then do a couple of minute, hey, see me on my presentation. Peace. Love you, thank you.
You can present anytime.
Would anyone else like to speak?
Go quick. The 8411835 East Blue Cove Drive in Dan Allen. Mrs. Yarmulke is correct. Detecting short-term rentals is very difficult. They, they on purpose, when they list them, there's 60 sites. There's 60 different sites. And when they list them, a lot of times they provide photos of the Rainbow River or manatees, but they don't provide the front of their house or house number. That's because of two reasons. One, they know their government's looking at them. And two, if they post their past address, then people can directly contact you and bypass VRBS, and they get a large charge. So it's a very time-consuming item to try to catch violators. You're exactly correct. Crystal River has a software that they're looking at, Grantus. Many of these, many of these looking at that. They provide presentations, I found it in Marytown County, the tax collector. And they do it many well, pretty much. So they're kind of interested in Grantus. They're going to office in July, and they're looking at, trying to get in the line. So they got Grantus, it could give us the rewards, and that's not. But Grantus, it goes online and into the database somewhere. And they give you reports, all the short-term rentals that have been utilized week by week in your city. And then they will provide you a legal document that's going to take you And then they provide you a legal document that's going to pay you in that special industry as an enforcement document. So it takes all the hard work out of it. It is some of $13,000, but that could be covered by registration fees and renewal fees.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Pass the rush, you've been sitting here for four hours. Come on, why don't you come up here and say something?
I love you.
Anybody else would like to speak before we turn? All I can say is I hope you all had saw this meeting on Saturday, see how thoroughly and seriously this council digs into everything, tries to get the thoughts on both sides of the equation, gives everybody a chance to speak. Very proud of this council. I'm very proud of what we represent. I think over the last couple of years, the way the city is perceived and looked at, not only by the citizens within, but for sure by those outside, is much different now. And I feel this council should take a lot of credit along with staff on changing the perception of what Dunellen City Government is all about. So with that, do we have a motion to adjourn?